I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will continue with the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk of the board.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 19, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. (cough) Excuse me. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Any members of the board have any items that wish removed from consent for discussion? I see none. Any member of the public identified any item they would like taken off of consent for discussion? And seeing none, I'll understand a motion for consent.
Second.
Motion Duran, second Montgomery. Roll call, please.
Duran, Wygant, Holmes, Montgomery, Euler.
Aye. Thank you very much. That brings us to the public comment period. Well, I assume most of you are here. Before you come jumping up, let's just lay the groundwork here. A lot of folks here, I want to get through as many as possible and not keep folks around. It is, of course, the chairman's prerogative to limit public comment and then take the rest at the end of the board meeting. Since you're all, I'm assuming, busy folks, let's try to get the comments in here right up front. So, to that end, if you want to step up and address the board under public comment, that's great. Try to keep your thoughts concise. And if the person in front of you said what you want to say, you could just say, yeah, what that person said, or what have you, just in order to keep it brief so we can accommodate as many of you as possible. So with that, sir?
Mr. Chair, did you?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Holmes, I didn't-
I just want to make a comment. As many of you know, I've been involved in fire district affairs. We see a lot of people here this morning representing fire districts. Supervisor Wygant and I serve on the LAFCO board. LAFCO is in the process of a municipal service review. I sit on the committee with Chief Bettencourt and former Chief Reed from Roseville to select the consultant, which we maybe, I think we hired the best one. It was a little bit more cost than some of the others. We're working on that municipal service review. LAFCO is waiting for reports back, some more information from some of the departments. As soon as those departments complete their reports, LAFCO will have the draft out for us. I want the board to be able to have that draft, to review it, and then I want to agendize the item for a discussion that's long overdue, to have a discussion about fire districts and fire service in Placer County. So if the chair would allow that when the draft comes out, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, Ann. Supervisor Holmes did contact me last week in anticipation of some folks showing up here this morning to ask that, at the earliest convenience, we agendize this item for discussion and possible action by our board to address the issue of fire service across the county. Supervisor Montgomery, something you want to add?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate Supervisor Holmes' comments. We've met with Mr. Reams and some of the other fire districts, asked them to work with us in agendizing this item. I've talked with our CEO about it. He's absolutely open to agendizing the item. I think there is a lot of confusion about the ERAF shift, Prop 172. It is a very confusing topic. And I think the opportunity to really have a full and robust conversation about that and the future of our independent special districts is at the time that Supervisor Holmes suggests, which is during that LAFCO report and review on special districts generally. I think at that time, we can certainly focus on fire districts. But it sounds like the board's on board with the conversation about this, when we have all the information that's going to be appropriate and necessary for that conversation. So thank you all for coming out today.
Thank you. And with that, sir, go ahead.
Good morning.
I'm sorry. Let me interrupt real quick.
Sorry.
Supervisor Grandus, if there's something else you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to-
This is public comment, but we're just chatting.
Yeah. And since we're talking about fire safety, you know, I'm very interested in the future. And I think that we not only, in the discussion of the seven districts, independent districts, we need to talk about the whole system. We need to talk about everything. Because this isn't going to get any better. And the thing that I want to focus on is sustainability. So that being said, I'm going to reserve my comments, for better or for worse, until we have this discussion of the challenges that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Can I start now?
I think so. Yes, you're good to go.
All right. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Chris Reams from Forest Hill. As I said, I'm Chris Reams from the Board of Directors of the Forest Hill Fire Prevention District. Thank you for allowing us to speak with you. We are Forest Hill, Placer Hills, Newcastle, Penrin, Loomis, and five, and South Placer fire districts. And I would like to recognize all of the citizens that came out. Thank you very much. All right. The problem is, if we continue to use the small district model for fire service, some rural fire districts in Placer County will soon be forced to make life-threatening and dangerous cutbacks in service. Forest Hill is looking at that situation right now. Even after major budget cuts, we are still looking at cutting even more services. Most of the districts in the county are in some sort of financial trouble. You're exactly right. The consequence is that lives and property are going to be unnecessarily at risk. The problems include the following. The first problem is the ever-increasing training and equipment requirements are now mandated by the State of California and the federal government. Those requirements have a major impact on small to district budgets. The second problem is that volunteers were used when the districts were formed. Training requirements have all but eliminated volunteers. The significance is that existing volunteer-based budgets just don't support a paid fire district. The third problem is that three-person stations staffing is the minimum safe standard per station, and some stations even below that. What it means is currently more people are at risk with, and property, when firefighters than should be. For example, on April 9th, Forest Hill had two firefighters at the station that responded to a structure fire. The other two from Station 90 were in an ambulance in Auburn. Doesn't help. The home was a total loss. The Outcan could have been better with more responders. It's obvious, isn't it? The fourth problem is low wages and benefits that result in poor employee retention. The consequence is a constant disruption of continuity of training and services. With the investment in state-mandated training, thousands of hours are lost with every employee that leaves. For example, Forest Hill has lost five captains in seven years. That should say it all. To give you an example, we have a paramedic firefighter, engineer runs the engine, and makes $13 an hour with no retirement. It's not a sustainable circumstance. It's just not. Okay? You could work for a grocery store and make more money than that. We must stop the value, the loss of valuable training and provide better stability to our citizens. Those are the major problems in essence. Why should you care? The first reason you should care is that you have a weighty problem on your hands, all of you. Because public safety is a fundamental responsibility of the governing body of any county, and it includes both law enforcement and fire. The closest reason you should care is that fire personnel respond to approximately 12,000 incidents in this county per year. But we're not Pottont County anymore. What makes it all work is the closest resource agreement, meaning that we send as many as necessary units to cover an incident, and then others move to cover the area for those who responded to the incident. It worked perfectly in the Applegate Fire, and a lot of property was saved because of it. What this means is, if cuts are made due to funding, you break the chain of service. And that means slower response times and responses weaker, putting more property and lives at risk. The third reason you should care is, keep these, with these cuts in mind, is if you're having a heart attack, every minute that passes without emergency medical personnel decreases your chances of surviving by 10 percent. That means in Forest Hill, that if you wait 25, 40 minutes for an ambulance, you aren't going to survive. The fourth reason you should care is that I know every single one of you are very concerned about the delivery of fire service this year. This is a terrible year with unprecedented fire potential, and I think you all know it. It should be very frightening to all of you. And that's why you should care. I have the solution, though, and here they are. The solution to the problem is twofold. The first solution is, in the long run, we have to think in terms of a whole new paradigm in providing fire service. Several counties surrounding us have solved the problem by creating a countywide fire district. The county absolutely must recognize the need for a uniform county fire agency to provide necessary services to the citizen of this county in the future. Not a happy topic, but it's the absolute truth. The second solution is the short run. To solve this current problem, we are only asking for next year's increase in Prop 172 monies, and yes, we are entitled to it according to the Attorney General. Properly distributing Prop 172 funding, like the proposition was intended, and if you see the video, which I tried to show, you'll see that it is clearly intended to go to fire districts. This would go a long way to support the fire districts. Remember that public safety unquestionably means both law enforcement and fire. I have another speaker.
Good morning. Jim Jordan. I'm with the Newcastle Fire District. Obviously, as we were told, public safety doesn't mean law enforcement and fire. I'm sure that law enforcement wants more of the dollars, but will, indeed, will those go to start to prevent fires? Excuse me. Some will say that we should do a tax initiative, which tends to be old-school thinking, and get some mucky off your back. All six districts have approved tax initiatives in the past, and several have tried again. Most have failed. The addition of the state of California SARA tax has the majority of our residents in an uproar and unwilling to assist at this point. Even if we passed an initiative this year, we would not see the money until July of '16. The need is now. Initiatives are no longer a viable option for the fire districts. Even if they pass, they don't provide a sustainable solution. Some have said that we're not entitled to money, and as Chris said, the Attorney General of California said, yes, indeed, we do. The case is available if you need it. Many feel that we should wait for the LAFCO report that will come out soon, but it is unlikely to be released prior to the critical budget meeting next month, and will only look at long-term recommendations for provision of fire protection. The short-term problem must be addressed now. The Prop 172 appropriation will provide a necessary infusion of dollars and create a better and more stable countywide fire service due to the assistance you provide to these six districts. It can be the basis for a countywide fire agency of the future. It is clear that this is a politically difficult decision, but it is up to you to provide the necessary funding for the districts. Please allocate to our districts the increase in funds provided by Prop 172 for the next fiscal year. Saving the districts is in your hands. The question is, will you stand by your fundamental responsibility to the county and do the right thing? Why wouldn't you vote to provide the increase in Prop 172 funds to the fire districts? Will you be the heroes who have saved our small districts? Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eleanor Petuski. I'm from Newcastle. First on, I wanted to say that I very much supported the tax increase for the Newcastle Fire Department a few years ago. Even though it was a drop in the bucket, it was not adequate for fair salaries and for, you know, reasonable staffing. So, you know, I think these people are here for good reason, and I'm behind them 100 percent. That is not why I'm here today, as you know. I again want to talk about the DeWitt property project. So I'll get going. I am here today to talk about the lack of transparency and the deceptive nature of the DeWitt property project. The county has had seven meetings, five of them closed, from November 8, 2011 to February 25, 2014. These agenda items state that the county plans to enter into an exclusive right to negotiate with Conkey LLC, and do not mention that the project is Costco or is at DeWitt. This is not transparency. We should not have to guess what you're talking about. The physical placement of these agenda items on the board agendas were misleading as to the significance of what turned out to be the Costco lease agreements. The November 8, 2011 board to hearing is listed under "department items to be considered for action as time allows." This heading suggests that the item is either of limited public interest, or it is considered routine. Not so. You were discussing Costco, which meant everyone at DeWitt would be evicted and the historical buildings would be scraped. You were talking about a vital senior center with a myriad of services in a central location, an historic WWII theater, which has offered theater arts classes for children in Auburn for years, a child development center, an array of small businesses who employ people and pay taxes, an athletic center with 2,000 members, 52 employees, and a very nice swimming pool, plus a building devoted to exercise classes and art classes through Placer County adult education. Senior services have been fragmented, and some of them relocated, some of the relocated classes are in inadequate space. The discussion of this item at the November 8, 2011 hearing lasted about six minutes and consisted entirely of the Facility Services Director's presentation. The board does not discuss the item, and there is no public comment. Transparent? No. At the December 11, 2012 hearing, the project is listed in an item for information and is located on the 12th page of a 12-page agenda. No one from the board requested to have this item discussed, so technically, is this even a meeting? I had to review the agenda three times before I could find this item, and I was looking for it. Again, this is not transparency. One of the reasons we keep coming back is that we are very concerned that it is the county's intention to demolish the historical buildings now. That way, they don't have to address in an EIR the historic nature of the complex, the services to the community that have been eliminated, or the recreational amenities that have been provided to this property. We, the people, want to have input on what happens to our property. The possibilities are endless, and we want something we can be proud of and will serve the community for years to come. Thank you. And we want this on the agenda.
And as you know, it's going to be on the agenda.
And I thank you for that, Mr. Euler, very much. Thank you.
Ma'am, come on forward, ma'am.
My name is Ramona Brockman. I'm from Loomis, California, and I would also like to address some issues with the DeWitt Center. So, good morning. And my comments revolve more around the EIR that was drafted in 2003 for the DeWitt Center, and I've done some research into that topic. So there are some issues that I would like addressed, that do need to be addressed, under CEQA regulations. First is that, under a 2008 amendment to CEQA regulations, Section 21166, program EIRs need to be updated for future projects or project changes if the ER, EIR was approved more than five years ago, and this environmental update must be properly circulated for agency and public comment. From my research, there has not been an update to the 2003 program EIR, and thus, a subsequent 2010 memo to Facility Services appears to be in error, as this memo notes that the further environmental documentation is not required. Point number two is that the DeWitt Center Historic Resources Survey, which was conducted for the 2003 EIR, is considered a valid declaration of historic significance under CEQA Title 14, Chapter 3, Section 15064.5, which states that a resource identified as significant in a historical resources survey shall be presumed historically significant. Furthermore, the letters written by the State Historic Preservation Office and the Department of Defense in 2004 stating that the DeWitt Center does not meet National Register of Historic Places criteria do not nullify the Historic Resources Survey Declaration of Significance according to the California Register of Historic Places. That's found in code Title 14, Chapter 11.5, Sections 4851 and 4852, which states that a resource may be eligible for listing on the state register even if it does not have sufficient integrity for the national register. So in 2004, the letters from the State Historic Preservation Office and the Department of Defense letters were written in regards to something that is referred to as a Section 106 review, but that Section 106 review does not apply to CEQA. It is a federal compliance for projects involving federal land or federal funds, so therefore, those are not sufficient for CEQA regulations. They were meant for some other purpose. The, my third point is that the 2003 EIR was for demolition of 28 specific buildings and the construction of three new buildings to house county public services that were in the WWII buildings. The county supervisors determined that the demolition of these older buildings and replacement with new structures would be consistent with the justification of greater public good for enhancing public service. However, the 2003 EIR project scope does not address any of the WWII buildings at the DeWitt Center, any other buildings. Furthermore, I am uncertain how demolition of additional buildings for anything other than public service offices could be justified as a greater public good. From my understanding, after reading the 2003 EIR, the only reason that the 28 buildings could be demolished is that the project was reviewed, was viewed as providing a greater public service with three new buildings, more effectively housing government services. I do not believe that a greater public good justification would apply to demolition of historic structures to make way for retail or commercial center. From reading California Historic Preservation Codes, it is my understanding that demolition of historic structures is only justifiable in a few cases and is considered a last resort. This type of demolition would also go against the declarations of the California Main Street Program intended to protect historic buildings from large commercial mall-type of developments. Thank you for your consideration of these matters in-
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jerry Fogel. I'm the President of the Forest Hill Firefighter Association. I've been asked to share some comments from the six special district fire departments and labor groups, which I put down on paper, and we'll share with you now. So, some people in the audience might not be aware, but when 172 was created in 1992, '93, it was to offset the ERAF transfer of funds. It was both law and firefighters that went out to educate the citizens of California about the half-cent sales tax that was going to help offset the cost and allow them to continue to provide them the services that they were used to. The voters passed that 172 tax proposition, and they believe that the half-cent sales tax would support both law and fire, which apparently has not happened here in Placer County. With the lack of public confidence these days in the government, here's, we'd like you to consider restoring part of the 172 funds to the fire districts, which will help you begin restoring the public trust. Ironically, if you're not unaware, when the proposition was on the ballot, there were a great number of fires down in Southern California, which I think helped sway the voters in recognizing the importance of this funding and not have their services cut with the fund being taken away from the ERAF. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Euler. Supervisors, I'm Ian Gao. I'm the Fire Chief of Placer Hills Fire and Forest Hill Fire. I'm also the President of the Western County Fire Chiefs Association. Sorry we bring in all this to your house this morning, but I think the significant point is that we're desperate. Our electeds are desperate. We're, as you are, working on our budgets for the coming year, and we're failing. And we're aware of our Cal Fire, Placer County Fire, Ofer Station possibly being closed. A number of us are looking at having to close stations just to manage our budgets, and those acts are desperate. It'll affect public safety clearly. So we're here. We've done all we can do. We can't go any further without you. And so we're here asking for your help, and you'll get our full cooperation. We just want to work with you, try and solve our countywide fire problem. But I promise you, we're here in cooperation. We want to work with you, but we're desperate for your help. And, you know, you have my full, my word on it, my full assurance is that I'll do everything I can to make it work for us. Thank you.
That's it? Out of all you armed buttons, that's everybody that wants to speak under public comment? Okay, that closes public comment. We thank you very much for your participation. We will go ahead and continue with the board's regularly scheduled agenda items. Give you guys a moment to go ahead and file out. There's either- of the board wish to bring your colleagues up to date on anything going on that warrants our time and attention? Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I put some documents on your-
This?
No, no, the Loomis, I'm talking about Loomis Library.
Oh, oh.
I met with one of the proponents of Save Loomis Library, Loomis? Loomis Library. Yesterday, I see Jenny Isley is on one of the, one of the committee members. They have a draft document. I believe they're meeting again tomorrow to kind of formalize the document. And so it looks promising. They have actually a plan in place. Hopefully, they can bring it to fruition, and I look forward to working with them. But I wanted to let you know that, I just wanted to give you that draft document so you can have an understanding of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other supervisors have anything to report? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and take up our 9:15 timed item. This is county executive item regarding drought and our water situation update. Mr. Story, good morning.
Yes, good morning, Honorable Board Chair and members and staff. Got a mic problem? Are we okay now?
No, it's on.
Okay. Brett Story from the CEO's office presenting today, and most of it's going to be PCWA, but I did want to let your board know that the county drought task force has been called, and we've been meeting. John Mcleodney from OES chairs that, and all your departments have been involved, along with other water agencies. And the county staff is doing the things that we talked about last year. They're conserving water, they're cutting back, they're trying to meet all of the obligations that are not only there this year, but in the future, trying to assist homeowners, new development, businesses, and general retail use about how to save water, working along with the water agencies. And I just want, sort of note, just to give you an idea of what's been going on at the drought task force. We're sitting there at the last one, gentleman from NID says, looks over and he says, you know, we have ditch water running right by here. We could probably hook up that you could use the ditch water to water the things in this area much easier and cheaper than treated water. So that's being worked out between the departments. So that's the kind of relationship that the agencies are having with the county, and I think, I think that will do us all all well. Today, though, you're going to hear, you get a PowerPoint presentation from two fine folks from PCWA. Tony Furenzi, who's a Deputy Director of Technical Services, and he also has a designation of being the drought manager. So we'd like to fire him from that job this year and never have it come back, but he's doing a great job from it. And then also Linda Jaeger, who's the Deputy Director of Customer Services at PCWA. And this lady is motivated. She tried to get me to take a lawn out I don't even have anymore. That's how motivated she is, and she does a great job for them. So I'll have Tony come and start the presentation. Thank you.
Imagine how much water you'd save if we tore that lawn out. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and other supervisors. Thank you for having PCWA here to speak about this important topic today. Very good. Yeah, now I know how to use the technology. Would I like to start my present- What I'd like to start my presentation with is just a recap of how we did in 2014. It helps put into perspective how we're doing this year, and there are quite a few similarities between last year and this year. The backdrop for this part of my presentation is simply a, kind of an outreach piece from the Regional Water Authority that talks about the great conservation that was achieved in this region last year. But to talk a little bit more comprehensively about last year, precipitation at the end of the year was 60% of normal, and snowpack was nominally 10% of normal going into the summer months last year. The final allocation that we received from our major water supply from PG&E was 79% of normal year allocations. And our PG&E supply is our, our most used water supply at, at PCWA. This was only the second year on record in, in PCWA's history that we received less than full supplies from PG&E. So it was a very significant year, or a very significant circumstance for PCWA. And lack of snowpack was the driving factor that resulted in that less-than-perfect allocation. We implemented several emergency projects and other programs. Most notably, we implemented an emergency groundwater project and an emergency pump addition at our American River Pump Station so that we could augment supplies out of the American River. And we also had a, a new drought program that reaches out to the agricultural community, and it's turning out to be really well-received. And most importantly, our customers stepped up. We achieved 18% conservation in the treated water system and 35% conservation in our canal system. And up on the slide here, again, this, this piece from the Regional Water Authority, you can see PCWA is showing right over here, Placer County Water Agency, at 24%. This is for the month of August 2014. So they, they wanted to show how are we doing in the summer months, and PCWA did quite well relative to the region, and the entire region did quite well, and really stood out ahead of the state as far as water conservation went. And then another thing that was very significant in 2014 was curtailment orders and emergency regulations on urban water use that came from the State Water Board. So how does that compare to, to 2015? This is a slide of precipitation thus far in the year, and you can, this is cumulative, and so that's why the curves grow as we move through the year. And you can see 2014 is shown right here, and we ended the year at about 40 inches of precipitation. And you can see the bold line here is thus far in 2015, and you can see we're at about 41 inches of precipitation. So we're quite similar to 2014 conditions. Snowpack, however, at this point in the year, is negligible. And so this is a slide of snowpack throughout the, the year, and you can see this sort of shaded region here would be a normal year where snowpack peaks in the month of April, and that's why the April 1 snow survey is something we all hear about. It's such a significant milestone in the water year because that's when snowpack should be at its peak. And you can see the bold line down here at the bottom where snowpack essentially bottomed out to nothing at the beginning of April. One statistic I heard from the state hydrologist, five of the worst 10 April 1 snowpacks in over 100 years of record have occurred since the year 2000. So five of the 10 worst have been in the last 15 years in over 100 years of record. So what that means to me, without speculation as to why we, we are seeing this trend, is that PCWA and other water purveyors across the state need to be prepared to deal with these kinds of conditions because they are occurring, and they are surprising and hard to deal with, but we're getting through. So looking ahead in 2015, that's some other matters. We're operating the reservoirs, and cooperation with PG&E, actually, they're operating the reservoirs very conservatively to maintain the carryover storage that we had from last year. And I'd, I'd like to make a very important note. That conservation that was achieved last year really did have a direct corollary into carryover storage this year. So the, the conservation efforts of our customers don't go without benefit. It definitely helped conditions for 2015, and PG&E is continuing to manage the system in a very conservative manner. Reservoirs in the PG&E system are near full right now, so things are looking good as far as reservoir storage. They've given us an allocation for this year. It was based on the April 1 snow survey, and it's 68, 68% of normal allocation. And compare that to last year, we ended the year with 79% of normal. That's, allocation from PG&E is subject to change. It could go up or down. I don't expect it to change a whole lot from the 68% where it stands now. PCWA, in response to the Governor's Executive Order issued on April 1, adopted a, a new, updated water shortage contingency plan that is compliant with the Executive Order and other matters that are going on with the State Water Board. And we also enacted Stage 2 of that plan, which calls for 25% level of conservation. I'm going to be comparing that to what the State Water Board is asking of us here in a moment. Oh, I'm sorry, before I get to the State Water Board. We are working on a plan to get from the 25% conservation to what the State Water Board is asking, which is actually 32%. And we're working on that plan right now. We are currently allowing two days a week of irrigation in our treated water system. And in our canal system, we're doing exactly what we did last year, which achieved 35% conservation, so we think that it was quite effective, and we can continue with that. We, water is fully available for new connections. We are imposing restrictions on new connections for landscaping around the new buildings. These restrictions are as required by the State Water Board. And construction water is also fully available. However, we are enforcing best management practices to make sure that when people are using water for construction purposes, you know, good practices are taken so that water doesn't run off the site and is used in an optimal manner and so forth. Okay. Now, as far as what's going on with the Water Board, the, we're kind of in a new territory with the Water Board being involved in drought management at this level. In 1977 drought and other droughts, they just haven't gotten involved like they have in this drought. The Water Board first enacted urban water conservation regulations on July 16, 2014, so that was last summer. So that, to me, is the first time on record where the Water Board set urban water practices statewide. And then they updated and continued those regulations on March 17 of this year for another 270 days. And then after, following the Governor's Executive Order on April 1, on May 5, they, they changed the regulations, and that's what I'm going to try to summarize here, because there was a very significant change in the regulations that occurred on May 5. And the major theme of the change was a, a change, a shift from asking water purveyors to take certain actions, like enacting a stage of your, a certain stage of your water shortage plan, or asking end-users of water to do certain things, like not hosing off your driveway and sort, those kinds of things. A shift from that kind of an approach to a performance-based approach, where now, they're really not asking us for any specific action, but they're asking for a very specific, or asking for us to achieve a certain level of conservation. They don't care how we do it, they just want us to get to that level of conservation. And unfortunately, the consequences for not achieving that level of conservation are not totally clear. That's what worries me the most. So I'd like to summarize those changes that occurred on May 5. The prohibition of watering of turf on public street medians, which comes right out of the Executive Order by the Governor. They have a revised limitation on new homes. So the Governor's Executive Order said that all new homes would have to be irrigated with drip or microspray systems. They, they modified that a little bit to say that any outside irrigation would be, need to be in compliance with the California Building Standards Commission. We've tried to investigate what are those standards. They don't exist yet, so they're being developed right now. So, but I have a feeling that they're going to be requiring drip and microspray systems, so we'll find out. And the, let's see, oh, sorry. The, and then the big change was this conservation tier system. It's based on July, August, and September 2014 residential water use. And so they created this metric of how much water is being used by residential customers across the state, and they set tiers based on that metric. However, the, the conservation tier, or the tier, the level of conservation being required is not just on the residential customers, it's on total water use of each water purveyor. So I found that kind of an interesting comparison. And the conservation compliance will be measured monthly and cumulatively, and so they're looking for achieving the mandated conservation each month, but with some flexibility, they're going to look at a total period starting in June of this year. And then, again, as I had said before, the Executive Director of the Water Board can issue something called conservation orders for water purveyors that are not achieving their level of conservation. So this is just a graphical presentation of these tiers. There were nine tiers in total. The, the lowest tier, tier number one is not, you don't get into tier number one by residential water use. You get into that tier through other water supply circumstances. So that only tiers 2 through 9 would play, would be based on your residential water use. And, and this is a complicated chart, but just in summary, the, the first thing to draw your attention to is this sort of cumulative shaded area here, and that is just a sorting of residential water use for all water, all 411 water purveyors across the state of California with an inclining level of use. And you can see that PCWA falls 317 out of 411 agencies. Our residential water use for July, August, and September of 2014 was 207 gallons per capita per day. That does put us in the higher portion of the water use, and that is mainly due to, PCWA has a broad range of customers and lot sizes in our system, but, but we do have quite a few large lots, and those people do use more water. And then also, our climate is a big driving factor behind this. So that put us into tier number eight, which requires 32% conservation. So we're the second highest tier. And then, also then showing on here, and unfortunately, it doesn't show up very well in this, on this projection, but you see this large shaded area here that I'm kind of outlining with the laser pointer here. That is the gross water use for a period of record for each of these tiers. And you can see over here, for instance, about 370 billion gallons is used in Tier 4. Tier 8, where we fall, there's about 200 billion gallons used. And PCWA, out of that 200 billion gallons, used 7.7 billion gallons for this period of record. So that was our share in that 200 billion gallons. So a couple of things to illustrate there. Approximately 50% of the water use is in tiers 2 through 6, and then about 50% in tiers 7, 8, and 9. And then compare that, these darker shaded areas below, this is the expected level of conservation for each tier. So our 32% would achieve this conservation here, down here in Tier 4, their 16% conservation would achieve that shaded area there. So 65% of the conservation is expected in tiers 7, 8, and 9. So we use about half the water, but we're having to provide about 65% of the conservation. So there is some inequity there, but that's what was implemented, and we're going to have to respond to it. And so again, the result for PCWA is an expectation of 32% conservation. So the next question is, what are we going to do about it? And for that, I have our Conservation Manager, Linda, to offer a proportion of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Members of the Board. So as Tony mentioned, I get the fun job of trying to figure out how we're going to get to 32%. And, but I think we've got a pretty good plan, working with our, working with our customers. So one of the things that we didn't do last year in 2014 was, you know, we didn't do this larger, broad, very visual, public-type outreach. And so we, we're currently working with the Board right now to seek some additional funding, but we did secure one billboard. So, so we're starting off with, so actually, I'm going to go into, I'm going to kind of go over our quantifiable actions and then some unquantifiable actions. And obviously, we can't measure water savings with a billboard. However, we're very sure that if folks see it, at least, you know, they're thinking, "Okay, they're really trying to tell me I need to cut back." So this, you guys are the first ones to see this. This isn't, is not even up yet. It's going to be up on June 1st on Highway 80 and Rockland Road. So our plan is to do some very visual, broad, public outreach like this, like a static billboard and also a couple other billboards. And then we'll be reaching out to some of our local cities, you know, to ask if we can provide some graphics and see if they wouldn't be willing to put some graphics up on their billboards too, the ones that they own. We'll also be using social media to get the message out, and we're, we're going to continue. We have a PCWA app that we have that you can report water waste. It has a shower timer. So we're looking to expand that and promote that, and we're also going to be placing some ads in local media, which is something that, you know, it's a little more, it costs a little bit more, but we think it's important this year in order to, for us to reach our goal. We're also expanding another, a pilot program that we have called Automated Metering Infrastructure, and it's short, we'll just, I'll call it AMI. The meters that we have now are read through a radio frequency. You know, our trucks drive by with the radio, it wakes up the meter, and that it sends the water usage of that meter to, to the truck, and then we download that information. But we bill, you know, every two months. With AMI, we'll be able to see hourly data. It's kind of like the smart meters that they have for, for energy, so they've, they've been out there for a long time for energy, so we're going to be using those for water. So we're going to expand a current pilot that we have. There, there's two different types. There's one that we have, we would have to have a lot of infrastructure in order to collect that information, using towers and repeaters, because PCWA doesn't own any, that much infrastructure, like light poles and that sort of thing. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be using cellular technology. So the meters that we'll have, we'll have like a cellular endpoint, or, you know, just to collect the data, and then we'll be able to call that information via, using the cellular technology. And then customers will be able to see their usage hourly the very next day, and then PCWA will also be able to see that. The benefit of that, we think, or what we know, is that one, we'll be able to set up leak alerts. For instance, let's say this building here, the domes, I like that term, the domes here, if you do have, I know, I know you have some landscape power, I haven't seen the entire landscaped area, but for instance, the folks that are maintaining this, the building here, or your facilities manager, if they wanted to check and see, you know, the usage here, we, we would assume that people aren't in the building at like, say, 4:00 AM. However, if there was usage at 4:00 AM, then you guys could set up a leak alert to notify whoever was managing the system, to notify them if there was, you know, a significant amount of usage, and PCWA could do the same. And we think this would be very beneficial, not only for homeowners, but for, especially for large landscapes and larger buildings, to check usage. So we'll be able to see basically abnormal usage, whether it be very, very low or very, very high. And also, you know, that way customers will have the opportunity to look to see whether or not, you know, they, well, we hope that they'll want to cut back, but then they'll get to have the opportunity to see where. And then let me move on. So some of the other things that we're doing that, again, are not quantifiable, the, in the Governor's Executive Order and the State Board's restrictions, they called upon all restaurants to serve water upon request. They also asked that all hotels and motels give patrons the opportunity to not have their towels and linens washed, and they wanted to make sure that they had signage, you know, very visible signage. So what PCWA is doing is we're providing window clings for restaurants, and we're also providing those little table toppers that you put on the table that says, "We serve water upon request." We've taken orders, and then we're also going to put, put something in our newsletter and also in a print ad, probably in the Auburn Journal, you know, letting people know we have these, they're available while supplies last, you know, we're going to only have a finite amount, to basically, you know, partner with restaurants and hotels. And again, a cup of water does not save that much, but we think that the public perception is, is, you know, is very visual, reminding customers to cut back. So now I'm going to go into kind of a little bit more on the quantifiable savings. So one of the things that we're doing that we think is going to be very beneficial is we're going to reach out to some of our large landscape customers, because with 32%, we're definitely not going to get that with indoor usage. So, you know, we, and we think, you know, we are, we're certainly the target for the water savings. We've got a lot, large lots in Placer County, you know, it's very warm here, so, and we've have a lot of well-watered turf. The turf has to be watered a little bit more. So what we're going to be doing is we're looking at some of our larger customers, parks, homeowners associations. There's a lot of office complexes that... There's a lot of office complexes that have what I call, it's kind of Linda's term, unusable turf areas. It's not a ball field. It's not an area where kids play. There are areas that are just well-water, you know, potentially overwatered and probably, very likely overwatered to, to keep green without a purpose. And so we're going to be working with our large landscape customers, just asking them to shut off certain areas. We are very aggressively trying to work with the region and the Regional Water Authority, and also Department of Water Resources, to, to acquire some of the Prop 1 funding that they are promising for water efficiency, so that way we can provide grants. So if they do take out their turf or let it die, we, hopefully, we'll have grant funding for replacing it with water-efficient turf and upgraded irrigation. However, without that funding, we're still going to be asking folks if they can just shut off unusable turf areas. And the city of Rockland, I'll give as an example, has done a great job of identifying those, you know, areas in their parks that are what we call unusable, you know, while maintaining the soccer field, the ball field, the area that, you know, would provide danger if we kind of went crispy around, you know, where kids play. The other thing that we're doing is water waste. And so we've, PCWA historically hasn't really had a proactive water waste patrol, but we've switched my staff to work four-ten's, so they'll be starting at 6:00 in the morning to kind of look for these things. And I, and I want to make this point, you know, we're not out to try to get people. Our goal is to, is to not offer punitive measures if we, if we can help it. You know, we do have a water waste charge. We don't have a ticket system. But our goal is to let folks know. And we started this week, and so my staff has found several office complexes where there's broken sprinklers, you know, and these are dedicated landscape meters, so we know there's no indoor usage. So there are, the meters are running. So that means that there must be a leak, a stuck valve. So our goal is to go out, you know, try to find the people that own these sites, or the landscapers, and let them know, and ask them, one, hey, you've got something going on here. Can you fix it? The other thing is, you know, are you willing to cut back a little bit? So that's something that we haven't done historically, that we are doing this year, and I'm very, I'm really excited, and I think that's going to help us achieve a pretty good, significant amount of savings. We're also hiring two temps to help with the calls, because when we say, anytime we say we have a water waste, we, we get lots of water waste calls. We have online reporting, so folks can call and report water waste. And so we, we will be responding to those proactively. And the other program that we have, one of them, the county does have a few parks on this program, and I'm hoping to acquire a few more. I have reached out to your facilities staff. We have a water budget program. So we're providing water budgets based on the landscaped area. We're providing a budget for the turf, shrubs, and trees, and any water feature. And we're asking that the, the landscape waters within that budget. So we have over 182 sites within Placer County, some of which are Placer County facilities, on the program. And we'll be reaching out to those people specifically, asking them if they can cut back, or actually just water within their water budget. And then I'll just move on quickly here. Conservation programs, I'll just mention, too, the Water Waste House Call Program is a program that we offer, which is free to all of our customers, as well as businesses, where my staff will come out, basically take an audit of any water-using device in your house, toilets, showerheads. Primarily, we focus on the landscape to try to help folks, because people say, well, how do I cut back 20 percent? How do I cut back 25 percent? And the primary call we get is, why do, why is my bill so high? And so my staff will go out and kind of, you know, they're detectives, and they'll help out. And so that's a free service that we've offered to homeowners, as well as businesses. As Tony mentioned, we also, we started an Ag Irrigation Efficiency Grant Program this year, working with the Placer County RCD. So we're offering up to $5,000 in rebates for high-efficiency equipment, turf replacement for customers that have untreated water. And then finally, I'll just mention our rebates. So we still have toilet rebates, clothes washer rebates, and we are going to be seeking funding, because we're completely out of money for our turf rebate programs, to take out your turf and put in water-efficient plants. But hopefully, we'll, we'll get some more money soon. And we've, we've, I say, I put doubled just because I'm being conservative, but I'm pretty sure we've tripled our outreach events this year. So we're going to be at the farmer's market. We were at the home show. This weekend, we had a mulch madness at Sierra College, where we gave away a free mulch to customers, and it was very, very successful. A lot of work, but we'll definitely do that again, all kind of promoting water efficiency. And then finally, I think this is one of the most important slides, is we're working with, we're trying to work with many of our local water purveyors, as well as, you know, the cities, Placer County, and, and the region. And so this is just one of the programs we have. We're working with the Regional Water Authority on a Be Water Smart Car Wash Program. So we've worked with car washes locally that are members of the State Car Wash Association, and developed some measures for car washes to be water-efficient. And we have like a certification program. So PCWA has three car washes in the certification program, and they're offering, each car wash that's in the program is on a website, and they're offering a $2 to $5 coupon for folks that go and use it, use these car washes. And then finally, like, as I mentioned, one of the most important things that we're doing with the Regional Water Authority and others is seeking funding. So seeking grant funding. You know, our push is that if we have to conserve a lot, you know, hey, give us some of the money to help us out. So that is all I have. Are there any questions for Tony or myself?
Questions by board members. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I did have a couple of questions, probably, I think, for Tony, because they relate to some state regulation. One of your slides indicated that there was no watering of turf in medians, which is a fairly narrow restriction. What are the, what are the restrictions, or what are the approaches to sort of more general outdoor watering? I mean, are there a number of days per week? A number of gallons you can put on something? I saw there were restrictions for, you know, microsprays and drip, but...
Yeah. And you're right, the limitation on turf is very restricted, restricted in its scope. It's only public medians, and it really is only medians. And also, turf medians that have trees would be excluded from that requirement. So pretty soon, you're, you're really narrowing down what is affected. So more broadly, the limitation on outdoor watering for, for turf and landscape areas is two days a week in our current enactment of Stage Two. We are, what we're trying to do at PCWA is leave the, the current stage at two that allows two days a week. That stage, we adopted it 25 percent. So how are we going to get from there to 32 percent? We're working with, as Linda had pointed out, larger water users for opportunities to make the difference, to get to the difference of 25 to 32 percent. So we still want to allow everyone to water two days a week. Normally, to go to 32 percent, we would be limiting to one day a week. What we're trying to do is find a more creative solution, allow the broader public two days a week, so we're not completely killing lawns. We, all lawns should look very stressed, but not dead. And then how do you get to that 32? Working with the parks, the unusable irrigation areas, and things like that. So we're trying to use a more creative approach on, on handling that.
Okay. And can you touch as well on the requirement about no watering after 48, or within 48 hours of rainfall, and how, how much rainfall? How does that get managed?
The state did not provide a statement of how much rainfall. However, we did, and I have to look to Linda. Do you remember the exact number?
Quarter of an inch.
It's a quarter of an inch. So PCWA, when we enacted the measures required by the state, we went ahead and specified it, because people usually want to just know the answer. So a quarter of an inch, within 48 hours of, of a quarter inch of rainfall, then yeah, there is a prohibition on landscape, or irrigation. And that is part of our patrolling program, is going out and looking for customers that may not know that, and inform them that their sprinklers are running, and it rained a couple days ago, and, you know, just advising them that, you know, they, they should sort of manage that a little bit better.
So what that means to me, then, is at least during this period of currently unsettled weather that we're having, is that, you know, people who may have their systems set up on a timer for twice a week, still need to be mindful of that, because they may be prohibited from watering even two days a week because of the 48-hour requirement.
That's a very good point. And this is something that really applies in the California climate, our Mediterranean climate. It really is something that applies in the shoulder months, in the spring and in the fall, when you can have a coincidence of irrigation practices colliding with rainfall. And so, yes, it is something that people need to be cognizant of. There are irrigation timers that are more sophisticated these days that will actually sense the rainfall and sort of do that automatically for you. But for those that don't have them, which is a majority of the population, they'll just have to be paying attention.
Okay. And then two more questions. Sorry, Brett. Just don't pop up. It's okay. How is the gallons GPCD calculated?
They, the way that it's calculated is, you take your total water production out of our treatment plants, because remember, it's only an urban number. And I always like to point out, only one-third of our water use is used by this demographic. But it's total treatment plant production divided by your population, and then also multiplied by the percent of residential water use only of your particular population. So it's, our residential water use is, represents about 60 percent of our total treated water production. So you take our total treated water production, you multiply it by 60 percent, you divide it by the population, which for us is around 95,000, and you have residential gallons per capita per day.
And that's based on census data?
Yes, census data.
And then, this question has come to me from a number of the people who live in smaller districts, particularly in the east end of the county, fewer than 3,000 connections, I think the number is. What are the requirements for them? Because they're not even listed in the listings.
Yeah. And so here, what we're talking about is smaller water systems. PCWA has a water system in the eastern part of the county, and they're subject to everything else that PCWA is subject to. But for a, a specific, small water system that is less than 3,000 water connections, the state still has them not on a performance-based system, but on a action-based system. And they're limited to two days a week of watering, and a host of other water use practice limitations, such as not allowed to water your driveway and so forth. So there's essentially a prescription of water use practices for those water systems.
But not a specific percentage that they have to meet for conservation?
They tie it to trying to achieve overall 25 percent, but there's not necessarily a correlation between the prescription and the target.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. That's very helpful.
No problem.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, I have a question for Linda regarding the car wash coupons. Is that, you obtain those through the website, the PCWA?
It's the bewatersmart.info. It's, I'm sorry, I didn't put it on here. It's the regional website.
All righty. And those coupons, are they just through agencies, the car washes that are served through Placer County Water Agency?
No, it's actually regional. So any car wash that has met the criteria, that, or the certification that's on the program. So you could go, if you wanted to go to one in Sacramento, you could go to one in Sacramento. So any car wash, and they're the ones that are offering the coupon.
Okay.
The car wash.
I'd go to one in North Auburn.
Correct.
Any other questions for supervisors? So an awful lot of what we've heard here this morning, we're talking about requirements and funding that's associated perhaps with the water bond in order to help meet some of these requirements on the conservation side. Of the $7.5 billion in the 2014 water bond, 2.7 was for new storage. What details do we have in terms of what the state has done thus far in moving forward with new storage capacity?
Well, I know there's a, a state, next week, there is a state presentation on how they have done, where they're headed with that. And so we're going to find out more next week, and I will be attending, and I'm assuming Tony and their staff will be attending, along with all the other water agency area, in the area. In fact, I wanted to point out, we had PCWA here today. We, we have over 120 water agencies in the county. Almost all of them are doing very similar things to what PCWA is, and they all have different. For example, I believe the city of Lincoln is at 36 percent, or 30, 32. And City of Roseville is different. San Juan is, I think that San Juan might be the 36 percent. And so we are working with all of the water agencies, and Dee Dee Cordell's office, trying to update our webpage to show people what their percentage is, where they should go, with a link to all those water agencies' websites, so that we can help pass the message along like today, and not just rely on the water agency, but to assist them in, in performing all that.
Supervisor Holmes and Montgomery, eligible still on?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
In light of what Brett said, yesterday, I was at the Mountain Counties Water Resources Association workshop in Calabasas County, and all the, several water districts and agencies were there, Calabasas County Water Agency, El Dorado Irrigation District, Nevada County, Nevada Irrigation District, Amador Water Agency, some of the smaller agencies. They're all doing exactly what, what we're doing here in Placer County. So it's, it's an ongoing effort throughout the Northern California.
I would point out, Supervisor Ullrich, we have already, we being the Middle Fork Project, has already put form a, a request for that funding of storage. We have a small storage project on, as a part of our relicensing. And right now, it's sort of a request for inquiry. And they weren't even sure how to formulate it, but that has gone in on the engineering side to try to get money for that. So, but like, as again, they'll be starting up next week with where it goes with the money.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you, Brett. Last week, we actually had a presentation on the same topic from Cindy Gustafson from the Tahoe City PUD. And one of the things that she brought up, that I think hadn't occurred to a lot of people, is water districts project their budgets and their revenue based upon water sales. And reducing your water sales by 36 percent is going to have an equal impact on those special districts' budgets, while they're also seeing increasing costs for people going out to monitor water, make sure that people aren't overwatering. And so there's both a loss of revenue and additional expenses that are coming out of this proposal, that certainly, similar to the fire districts, some of these special districts are really going to struggle with managing those dollars. So again, the conversation about special districts and the LAVCO analysis, I think, is going to be really important as it relates specifically to this issue, as well as fire. From a policy perspective, I think, from what we can do at the county, other than watering twice a week and making sure we don't water parking lots and things like that, I think we need to reopen the conversation about gray water and purple pipe, and how we not only allow gray water for development, but actually incentivize it. And I think we have some great opportunities to work with the building industry, and to also work with our Empower Program, because we've, we've got to, to take the step and really move forward on helping the larger community help themselves. You know, and I see a future where people are, you know, wanting to put gray water systems in their homes, because they know, when their neighbor's yard looks parched, they've got a gray water system on site that's keeping their property lush and beautiful. And that's recycled water that would otherwise go down the drain. So I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to really have that conversation about how we incentivize everything from small-scale, single-family homes to large developments, to embrace gray water, purple pipe, and figure out how to, instead of just flushing that water down the drains, reuse it appropriately. So I look, I look forward to that as a, as a policy conversation.
Supervisor Graham?
Yeah, I was going to say, before we get to that policy discussion, you know, there are a lot of restrictions on gray water that are placed on by the state. So that's really the place where we really need to focus our attention first, before we could even start to begin to have that discussion. But it is a...
That is part of the policy conversation, exactly.
That is, you know, part of the discussion, and I'd be happy to...
And just to let you know, your staff in Sidra has been working those, and they do have the ability to carry on that conversation and into your discussions.
Okay. I don't see any other questions by board members. Any members of the public want to address the board on this side? I mean, any questions might have prompted that if you could be, are you getting up to beat a hasty retriever? Actually, oh, here we go. All right, coming up this way.
Name is Ramona Brockman from Loomis, California, and I have a couple of questions, I guess, directed at PCWA, that I noticed on your information that you showed that you'd be showing and trying to educate the public on reducing water use. And my question is, are you also providing residents in your information booths or advertising on the California River Friendly Landscaping objectives and program? Because I think not only does the public need to be educated on reduction of water use, but also on alternatives, on how to re-landscape, instead of just simply cutting off the water or watering your sod less, to replace it with something that is much more sustainable over the long run. And I believe that the California Water Board used to have some grants available for river-friendly landscaping, so that private citizens, or even, like you mentioned, office complexes and things, could have money available to replace... um, office complexes and things could have money available to replace their current landscaping. I'm not sure if those are still offered by the California Water Board. And last year, I do know that Roseville, the city of Roseville, held a conference or a workshop, aimed at developers or builders to educate them on adopting river-friendly landscaping for their designs. And that was put on, uh, through the, the, um, I think it was the, uh, Dry Creek Conservancy in joint with the Rose, City of Roseville. And if you're interested, you could, um, maybe, uh, contact them as to if we can do something similar here in Placer County to really inform, uh, and go forward into things like reusing gray water and make that more standard practice in our development plans.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I know that you'd mentioned earlier the availability of incentive dollars for people making changes. Are there dollars specific to the landscaping, taking out turf, replacing it with low-water plants and those kinds of things? And if so, where, where is that information to be found? You can just stand there, that microphone's on. Where, where is that information to be found?
On our website. So currently, we're out of funds for turf replacement and high-efficiency, um, upgrades. However, we are going to be asking for the board for additional funding. And if we do, if we do receive the funding, we won't open up that program until October, because it's, that's the best time to plant. So we don't want to have people taking out turf, putting in new plants in June and July and August, and then they're just going to, one, require more water to keep them alive, and then they may not, they may not, um, live anyway. So if we do get the funding, we, we're actually going to our board, at our next board meeting, to request additional funding, and if we do get it, we'll have a program, and it'll be on our website. Um, and the program will, um, start in October.
Great, thank you.
And to the, should I answer her question? Sorry.
Which one?
Related to the River Friendly Landscaping Program. PCWA did offer, um, the last two years, River Friendly Landscaping for homeowners workshops at our facility. And then we're also going to be partnering with, um, the group that she mentioned, Eco Landscape California, to offer a workshop for professionals, um, this fall.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on, seeing as how there was no action required of us, it's an information item only, to our nine-thirty timed item, which is an action item. We're going to ask our Parks Guru, Mr. Ramirez, to step forward and tell us a little bit about the annual, uh, adjustment to the current assessment in Granite Bay that's been requested.
Thank you and good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the action requested today is to conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution, approving an engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering a levy of assessments for fiscal year fifteen sixteen for the Granite Bay Parks Trails Open Space Assessment District. Uh, this is a third of three actions required by your board. Uh, back on February third, twenty fifteen, your board adopted a resolution directing preparation of the engineer's report, and that started the process. On April the seventh, twenty fifteen, your board adopted another resolution, and this one was a resolution of intent to levy assessments for fiscal year fifteen sixteen. And then the action, again, before your board today, is a public hearing to consider adopting of the resolution and approval of the engineer's report and the diagram. Um, the, there are eight parks in Granite Bay that are covered within the Landscaping Lighting Assessment District, as well as approximately twenty miles of trails down there that are all funded by this, um, funding source. The current year assessment per parcel in Granite Bay, there's about eight thousand parcels down there, is seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. And it would increase, the proposal is increase it by two-point-six-seven cost of living amount, so resulting in about a two-dollar increase. Um, the assessment revenue funds maintenance, administration, and improvements within that district.
And just to be clear, John, this, uh, this particular assessment district was created by the voters, and it did include the provision for the annual increase.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. All right, any board members have any questions on the item? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? We'll close public hearing, bring them back to the board for action. Motion Duran, second Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Record to reflect Supervisor Montgomery, temporarily absent, please. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Uh, item number three, or nine-thirty-five timed, uh, timed item. This is a street request, uh, for a Williamson Act contract. So who's flying on this one? None other than the man himself.
Good morning, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Uh, staff is requesting that this item be continued to the June sixteenth agenda to allow additional time to respond to issues that have been raised regarding the proposal.
Okay. Any board members have any concern with the request for continuance of this item? Seeing none, without objection, the item is continued to the June sixteenth board at nine-twenty. Thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to our nine-forty-five timed item. This is the Orchard at Penron subdivision rezone vesting tentative map, and EJ Ivaldi.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm EJ Ivaldi with the Planning Services Division. I am joined here by Sherry Conway. He will be presenting the Orchard at Penron project. As you may recall, back in two thousand and twelve, this project was approved as a hundred-and-fifty-unit, uh, multifamily project. They since have revised their plans, uh, and they're coming back with a proposal for a fifty-four-unit, single-family project, uh, which the Planning Commission is forwarding, recommending, or recommendation of approval of that project. So with that, I will turn it over to Sherry Conway.
Good ma, morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For your reference, uh, here's a location map. Uh, subject property is located in the community of Penron, on the west side of Penron Road, approximately a half a mile north of Interstate eighty. Property is also located, uh, within the Horseshoe Bar Penron Community Plan Area. Project site is comprised actually of two parcels. Uh, one parcel to the east, oh, whoops, sorry. I always have trouble with this, to the east of approximately five acres. And a parcel to the west consists of a, approximately nine-acre site. Uh, the site has approximately four-hundred-and-ninety-five feet of frontage along Penron Road. If I can work this, this Penron Road. And a small amount of frontage along Taylor Road as well. Topography of the site is gently sloping from north to south. The site also does support, uh, about two and a half acres of riparian scrub habitat, which is associated with these two drainage areas, uh, in the east and central parts of the site. As EJ just noted, in April, I'm, I'm sorry, in December two thousand and twelve, your board approved the Orchard at Penron project that would have allowed for the development of one-hundred-and-fifty multifamily residential units. Uh, entitlements with that project included a tentative subdivision map, a conditional use permit, and the certification of an EIR. Uh, due to a changing economic climate, as we all know, things are starting to turn around here in Placer County particularly. The applicant has now come back and determined that this originally, uh, previously approved project is no, no, no longer financially viable, and is now seeking instead an alternative and a modification of this project to allow a fifty-four-unit, single-family, uh, subdivision in lieu of. Uh, so the project as proposed before you today would develop fifty-four, single-family residential lots. Project site would include six, uh, open space lots, including the, uh, wetland area in the middle of the site, which is bifurcated, sort of the, the two, uh, segments of the subdivision, as well as a, a small recreational tot lot. I wanted to just quickly go over the comparison of the approved project that still stands today with the project that's now proposed before you. There's an obvious reduction in the number of dwelling units from a hundred-and-fifty to fifty-four. The corresponding reduction in local population growth would go from four-hundred-and-twenty people to about one-hundred-and-fifty-two. Obviously, the new project proposes single-family rather than attached multifamily residences. The new project, the proposed project, uh, will have reduced visual impacts, because of the smaller scale and size of the buildings. To dovetail on our water presentation, there will be an overall decreased water demand from sixty acre-feet, um, to twenty-nine acre-feet annually. There'll be an obvious reduction in ambient noise due to the fewer facilities. No, uh, no longer is there a recreational, uh, and, uh, homeowner's pool proposed with the project. Fewer daily vehicle trips with this project. Five-hundred-and-sixteen, down from nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine vehicle trips per day in and out of the site. Obviously, uh, fewer, uh, pounds of solid waste would be generated and a, a reduced volume of cuts and fills. Everything essentially reduced. We did bring this to the Horseshoe Bar Penron Municipal Advisory Council on two occasions, one for their consideration as an informational item, and one, uh, as an action item at their March twenty-fourth meeting. The MAC did vote five to two, uh, in favor of, to recommend, uh, approval of this project to the Planning Commission. Then on April ninth, the Planning Commission did consider this project, including the requested rezone, the tentative subdivision map, and the variance to parking. There were no public comments taken at the Planning Commission hearing. Ultimately, the Planning Commission adopted a motion, uh, six to zero, there was one, Commissioner absent, to recommend approval to your Board of Supervisors for this project. And with that, staff does recommend that the Board of Supervisors accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission and approve the Orchard at Penron subdivision modification, adopting, uh, the resolution. Uh, I'm sorry, adopting the addendum to the previously certified environmental, EI, uh, environmental impact, uh, report, adopting an ordinance to rezone the fifteen-point-one acre site from multifamily residential with a density limitation of ten units per acre, combining planned, uh, residential development of ten units per acre, and a rezone of the, uh, C-one U.P., which is a neighborhood commercial zone district, combining use permit, combining design scenic quarter to, uh, overall for both parcels, residential, single-family, combining mill, building site minimum of four thousand square feet. The third item that you would be, uh, looking at is to approve the vesting tentative subdivision map. You would also be, uh, being requested to adopt a variance to the zoning ordinance requirement of parking. We're looking for a reduction in the, uh, parking standards from one-hundred-and-fifty-eight spaces to one-hundred-and-thirty-six. And then finally, to approve the conditions of approval and the errata sheet that has been provided to you, which, um, addressed three conditions, mostly related to parks' requirements. Uh, condition number seventy regarding fishing game fees that were paid. Condition number seventy-one regarding credit to be provided to the applicant for the development of onsite recreation. And then for condition four, again, regarding the design of some onsite recreational facilities. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board may have.
Okay. Board members have any questions? The staff, before we ask the applicant to come forward. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I had one technical question. Thank you. Very good presentation. Um, the decrease in vehicle trips, um, to five-hundred-and-sixteen from nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine, is that based on a hundred-and-thirty-six spaces or on a hundred-and-fifty-eight parking spaces?
I believe it's based on the number of units. So the fifty-four residential units equates to the number of vehicle trips per day. Have to check in the, uh, EIR addendum for the answer to that.
Okay, so, I'm just wondering what the impact would be from a reduced number of parking spaces. I, I would have to assume that there would be some relationship between a reduced number of parking spaces and vehicle trips.
So our zoning ordinance is kind of quirky.
Okay.
Our zoning ordinance says, when we have a, a road section that is less than thirty-two feet in width, which the two interior looped roads are in fact twenty-eight feet in width, our zoning ordinance does say that in those instances, instead of just providing two onsite, onsite spaces per single-family residential unit, in those instances, we require four onsite parking spaces, not including a garage. That's the quirky part to me. So, um, so we can't count that two-car garage, even though these units will have that. So we need to find places outside of the, um, the residential lots to park those vehicles that normally could park on the street, but because of the reduced road section on the two interior looped roads, on-street parking will be prohibited. So I think the traffic generation is really tied to the population rather than the parking because of the, uh, kind of quizzical nature of the zoning ordinance. We'll have to, you know, kind of explore that, because we do see reduced road sections often. And, and I want to say, um, on behalf of the applicant, the road sections are reduced for the two interior looped roads because of the overall site design. They were trying to preserve the wetland areas as best as they could, and the integrity of the environmental, environmentally sensitive areas kind of caused them to, uh, cluster the development on either side of the swale in the center of the, uh, project site.
That is quirky. Thank you.
It's quirky.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask the applicant to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marcus Laduka, thirty-two-hundred Douglas Boulevard. On behalf of the longtime property owner and the applicant today, I'm pleased to be before you with a recommendation for approval from your staff from the Horseshoe Bar Penron MAC and the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission for a project that, um, as you see before you, proposes a nearly two-thirds reduction in density from the last time you saw this project, nearly two and a half years ago. The project before you, this reduced density project, really comes about as a result of the sharply changed financing picture for apartment projects in the greater Sacramento region. After a nearly seven-year process to get that project approved, my client faced a financing landscape that was seeing no market-rate apartment projects built in Northern California, other than the Bay Area and a few very small projects in downtown Sacramento. Combined with the fact that these, uh, apartment projects and all, um, non-single-family are required, uh, really to get labor to pay Bay Area wage scales, increased, uh, costs of materials, my client was faced with a very difficult, uh, decision. As a longtime apartment owner and apartment builder throughout the Western United States, they could hold on to the entitled project that was, um, um, you know, in place from two thousand and twelve, seek even a renewal of those approvals, but it had a project that was not financeable, no longer feasible from an economic standpoint, or look at a change in land use. Um, after nearly ten years owning this property, um, I think they figured out that, uh, time was, uh, come to maybe, um, defer to the marketplace, and they've come back before you with this fifty-four-unit project, which, um, interesting to note is actually fewer units in the sixty that was, uh, recommended by opponents of the multifamily project the last time you saw this, in two thousand and twelve. As staff mentioned, and we're not going to iterate the project in terms of its environmental impacts, has reduced impacts in a whole variety of areas, um, including not just traffic, but also air quality, greenhouse gas, noise, um, amount of cut and fill, and as, uh, staff mentioned, uh, half the water usage of the, uh, previous project. The project will still be implementing, um, this, uh, removing the soil contamination under the now state-approved remedial, or, uh, action, uh, work plan that was approved subsequent to, um, action by the board. That'll benefit downstream resources, um, and they will also be, as the site plan shows, preserving that central apparent area and also the significant rock outcroppings. The, we are also, uh, again, seeking to minimize pavement in the subdivision, which also has water quality benefits in addition to allowing us to preserve some of the other resources on site, and that's the reason for the, uh, parking variance. I would note that, um, in both of the, uh, looped internal streets, there are parking areas also that are provided, not just the on-street, uh, there won't be on-street parking, but there are parking areas provided for guest parking, so that is also something that's provided by the project. Again, both staff and the commission thought that we will still be providing, uh, sufficient parking, um, for the, for the project. My client has worked with his neighbors, um, and the MAC in bringing this project forward to you. Again, although we've lost nearly two-thirds of the unit, my client will still be, uh, coming forward with his proposed contributions to the Penron Elementary School and the Del Oro High School pool project to provide, um, added community benefit, um, again, in, uh, despite the project being sharply reduced. He thought that was the right thing to do, is a commitment he made and a word he gave to both, uh, superintendent and to the Del Oro High School pool project, and will, uh, move forward with that as a builder comes in to build the project. With that, we'd ask you to join the MAC, your staff, and the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission, and rec, uh, and approve the project today as it's, uh, been presented to you. My client and I are here to answer any questions the board might have. Mr. Chairman?
Questions of the applicant at this time. Seeing no questions by board members, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing to any members of the public that wish to address the board on this request.
I'm Lauren Ingram. I live at, uh, on Penron State Drive, probably not even a quarter-mile away from this property. I have a simple question, and I see that on the map, the water area in the middle of the property is very well-protected and set aside, and yet at the front of the property towards Penron Road, there are residences put on the water area. towards Penrin Road, there are residences put on the water area, or what, you know, whatever you call that, that land that has water running through it. Wouldn't it be better to not have houses or properties on that? Why can't they protect that section the same way they did the section that's in the middle of the map?
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item?
Ladies and gentlemen of the supervisors, I wasn't here during the...
Sorry, we need your name.
Oh, I'm Walt Shear. I live in Loomis, California. I was not here during the original battle over this project, but I do want to just come forward and express our thanks to Mr. Laduka and the proponent for honoring the contributions to the community assets that they are going to continue to support despite the reduction in profits from this project. I think that that's a very commendable position for them to take. Also, though, you know, you guys went through an awful lot of hearings and got some bloody noses over that thing, you know? All to go to, you know, on behalf of the folks that did protest, I want to say, "I told you so." Thank you very much, and again, thank you, Mr. Laduka, for honoring the commitment.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board under the public hearing?
Chairman, did you want me to address the question that came up from the member of the public?
One second. Let's just close out public hearing first, then we'll take care of that. So seeing nobody else rising to address the board under the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board and the staff. Mr. Laduka, if you want to address the one concern in regard to the drainage way on, I believe, the eastern boundary of the property?
Yeah, all that soil is being removed, and that's part of the remediation work plan, that entire portion of the site, all the soil is being removed, and so there is no preservation possible at that point of that area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Any board members have any additional questions for staff before we entertain a motion? Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion. I would move that we adopt the addendum to the previously certified Orchard at Penrin Final Environmental Impact Report and amended mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt an ordinance to rezone the site, approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, approve a variance to allow for a reduction in the required parking standards from 158 to 136 spaces, and adopt the conditions of approval and errata.
And Chairman Euler, while I did not support the 150-unit proposal, I'm delighted to second Supervisor Holmes' motion.
I'm delighted to have him.
And real quick, Chairman, I just want to point out the errata. I'm not sure if that was included in the motion.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
I will pay attention to that.
And I wanted to confirm that the motion included the findings on page 89 of the staff report.
This motion includes findings. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I just wanted to thank staff and the applicant for their diligence in bringing this forward. Back to the MAC, I know you've spent several meetings through the MAC process, and I appreciate your effort on both of your proposals. Thank you so much.
Any other comments by the supervisors? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. All right. We will take our first department head item, that is Facility Services item. This is an update in regard to the Placer County Fairgrounds, the All-American Speedway, Facility Services, Mark Wrightout presenting. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board. Mark Wrightout from Facility Services, and I am pleased to be here today to provide you with an update on Placer County Fairgrounds in Roseville. A lot's happened since I was here earlier this year. Your appointed Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee has been a real pleasure to work with. It's a diverse group of hard-working individuals, agricultural industry reps, professional citizens, and folks that are interested in the fairgrounds and its future. In addition to our monthly meetings in Roseville where we've had people from the fair industry come as guest speakers, we had a group that met diligently to help us craft the RFP, and I'm happy to say that's on the streets now with the help of John Manning and Brett Wood in Procurement Services. It's reached folks across the country, and we're looking to close that solicitation on June 16th. With the review of that document, or the proposals we receive, and the negotiations of a potential new contract, we're looking at being at your board in the fall with a contract for your consideration. We had a pre-proposal conference that was well-attended last Thursday, and the process is going along well. Property management, division staff continue to engage with the fair association. I've been attending their board meetings. We're working with them on various operational issues, the RV park permitting, a water leak that happened over the weekend, and various other things that go on at facilities of this age. We're also going through the process, looking at their request for bridge funding to help conduct the 2015 fair that's coming up shortly at the end of June. So I wanted to keep it brief this morning and give some time to Mr. Hagwer, who is the CEO of the fair association, to provide the formal update, and be pleased to answer any questions that come through.
Any questions, Mr. Wrightout, before we throw it over? Nope? All right. Is it Greg's going to hop up and talk to us, or who's going to? All right. Come on forward. Currently, it's the guy running the show. We should probably hear from you.
Wow. You guys have a pretty full plate. Again, I'm Greg Hagwer. I'm the CEO, I would say acting CEO of the Placer County Fairgrounds. Just so some of you have a little bit of history of me. I retired in 2010 from the Gold Country Fair, and then prior to that, I was the CEO of the Colusa County Fair, and I've been in the fair industry for about 40 years. It was very interesting. Have all the respect in the world for Cal Fire over here. In my many years in the fair industry, fairgrounds throughout the state of California are used as emergency evacuation centers, and I've had the pleasure of working with Cal Fire at a number of different fairgrounds, and absolutely great group of people. The fairgrounds is also very happy to say that from 2013 to 2014, we reduced our water usage by 40%. Now, that was a little off agenda, but I would like to thank the county for its annual sponsorship, the loan. Hopefully, we're going to be able to not need as much as the county has allowed us to apply for. And I'd also like to thank Lori, Nick, and Mark Wrightout for working very congeniately with the Board of Directors of the fairgrounds and with me. It's been a very good working relationship, and hopefully, it's going to resolve into something very positive for the Placer County Fairgrounds and the city of Roseville and the county of Placer. At this time, we are about $42,000 ahead of where we were last year in our budget. Our interim rentals have increased about 8%. Interim events, which is a little different, it's more like major events, the Haunted House, the Berry Festival, they're about the same. Attendance figures for 2014 was up about 8% over 2013. We have not had the 2015 fair yet, but we're hoping for an increase. We're getting very positive reactions from people in the community. We had the Speedway open three, four weeks ago, and the first race, we had about 1,300 people attending. We've had three races since then, between 800 and 1,000 people attending. Capital improvements, none to speak of because financially, we've been just keeping operating. Well, proposed projections, we're just hoping to have a good fair and get the word out so that whatever happens, at least the association will provide the best fair that they're possibly able to do. At this time, we're projecting a reserve of 2% to 3%, that'd be $20,000 to $30,000 at the end of the year. If we go to the end of the year, there's a possibility that the association might leave in October. That's all in the works at this time. We've had a bit of a problem with bad publicity, just in the communities. People were actually thinking we weren't going to have a fair, that the Speedway wasn't going to open, and we've been trying to get out to the community and educate that to the, as best we're able to. We have a very, very limited staff. The association and myself kind of look at the problems with the fairgrounds in three items. First of all, the state of California cut allocations in 2010, which was a sizable chunk of all fairs budgets, pretty much about $250,000 to $300,000 of lost revenue. That's starting to come back from the state. We feel, the association feels that there was a lack of planning on the part of the city of Roseville for allowing residential areas to develop over an activity center, just like if you don't like airplanes, don't live next door to an airport. We have been surrounded. We have a lot of documentation and pictures of the fairgrounds when it first existed. Most fairgrounds are put just outside of the city, and then the city grows around them. And then people have problems with events and races and things that happen at fairgrounds. And of course, the association has to take responsibility because they have had seven fair managers in 10 years, and there's no continuity. Staff is maintained fairly strong, but that many different managers, they've been very confused. I've been just trying to bring things together, produce this fair, and try to straighten out some of the financial inconsistencies, I would say, of the fairgrounds. Although the state budget is improving, and the governor is now allowing, I think, $7 million for, this is for 78 fairs in the state of California, $7 million for capital improvements, and about $3 million for operations of facilities. That's mostly for the smaller fairs. The bigger fairs, they're kind of letting run on their own, but again, that's going to be divided up among about 50 fairs. There's about 25 fairs in the state that are referred to as challenged fairs. Basically, they just operate at the max of their budget. When the allocation left, then they had to really tighten their belts, and it's been a big challenge. We see the pendulum starting to swing back. The Placer County Fair Association has operated the fairgrounds for almost 80 years, with the exception of four years during World War II. And on behalf of the fair association and the staff, we would all like to thank the county of Placer for its continuous support over the years, and we wish all the success, and we hope that everything works out. I strongly feel that fairgrounds are a vital asset to any community, and the opportunities that are afforded to nonprofit organizations and the junior livestock auction is incredible. Those kids at Placer County grossed about $250,000 on their projects. As I said earlier, I had managed the Colusa County Fair, and when I left there, they were grossing about $300,000. This year, they reported $1,200,000. It's a much stronger ag community, but I really feel that those are probably the best kids in the world for HFFA. What can I, oh, this is 40 years of corn dog. And again, I'm a fair manager, not great, but fair. So can I answer?
Any questions outside of dietary restrictions? Any questions by board members at this point? I don't see any question. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Graham?
I just want to...
Your light is on. I apologize.
No, I slipped it on real quick. I just want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. I know that there's, that you stepped into the middle of a hot situation, and it's going to be hot. I still haven't figured out why it's so hot. You know, fortunately for me, I came on in 2010, and I don't carry the baggage of the relationship between the county and the city. So I appreciate what you're doing to kind of level things off and keep the fair running as best as it can in the future, and I pledge my support in whatever we can do to arrive at a consensus of what we're, of what the goal and the end game is here, and assist you in any way that we can with the transition. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Strong fairs are made up of good relationships between the fairgrounds and the community. That has kind of broken apart. It goes back a ways. It has broken apart, but you know, after managing a few other fairs that had real strong community support, it was much easier operations, and I understand that there's, you know, pros and cons to being in town with a fairgrounds, so.
I'm dealing with the now and the future. I really don't care what happened in the past.
All right. Greg, by the way, what's the theme of the fair this year?
There's no place like Placer.
That's a heck of a theme.
Yeah, and we're working with the Placer Visitors Bureau and a few other people in the activities areas, I would say, and we're trying to bring in different recreational opportunities, agricultural opportunities, arts, and those, we're trying to feature those types of things at the fair this year.
And the dates of the fair this year?
June 20th, yes, June 25th through the 28th.
Yeah. With the Miss Placer County...
On June 27th.
On the 27th, Saturday evening. I will be emceeing. For those of you who don't get enough of me here every other Tuesday and want the opportunity to see me in front of another microphone, so look forward to that as well. Any other questions by board members? Seeing none, we'll see if any members of the public want to ask any questions before we bring it back to staff. There are a couple of folks jumping up, come running up to the microphone to talk about the fairgrounds. Yes, sir?
I'm Walt Shear from Loomis, and it's great to see Greg here. I was on the Gold Country Fair board when we hired him after he left Colusa, and I want you to know you have a really great professional fair manager here. He was able to take the controversy of the Fast Fridays, which is comparable to your Speedway problem, and really calm the community and have a dialogue with the community that brought everyone to resolution there. He reduced operating costs by creative management and increased the interim fair revenues over the course, and he gave us a really, really great fair. I think you're going to enjoy the fair with Greg in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Lee Bastian with the Sheridan MAC, but also I worked with, helped volunteer at the fair. And Greg forgot to mention the deadline to enter the fair is May 22nd, so if you've got any pictures or autographs still to save, you've still got time till Friday to enter.
And that's entering what precisely?
Entering anything, photographs.
For art competitions?
Yeah.
And the deadlines for our friends in FFA and for HR?
HR, May the 22nd.
All right.
And the other thing is, I work as a small animal barn superintendent for the fair, and last year, we had 55 turkeys, market turkeys, and I'm hearing we're going to beat that record this year.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public want to address the board on this item before I throw it back over to staff for some final thoughts? Okay. Seeing none, Mark?
I just wanted to quickly recognize Mr. Bastian and Madeline Miller, who are members of the FRC, and they're in the audience today, and thank them for helping.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being a part of it. Okay. No actions required of the board. We appreciate the report, and we will go ahead and move on. Thank you so much. We will go to our Health and Human Services Adult System of Care. This is a proposed contract amendment with Nevada County Department of Behavioral Health.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board. Marie Osborne here on behalf of Maureen Baumann from the Adult System of Care. I am here this morning to request that the board approve one item with two actions. The first action is for the board to approve the amendment contract CN013435 with Nevada County Department of Behavioral Services for Crisis Triage Services, increasing the total compensation by $129,000 for a new contract total of $1,121,160 for the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. The second action item is for the board to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign this amendment and subsequent amendments not to exceed a cumulative total of 10% of the contract amount consistent with the current agreements, subject matter, and scope of practice. At this time... At this time, I would like to provide you with some additional background information. Since August 1st, 2009, Nevada County Department of Behavioral Health has provided cost-effective and efficient phone crisis triage services for the residents of Placer County. These services are provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and include information on and linked to some of Placer County's Adult System of Care's mandated services, such as the Adult Protective Services, Public Guardian, Crisis Mental Health Services, and In-Home Support Services. During this fiscal year, there continues to be an increase in the call volume. APS alone has increased 25% in the last three years. In addition to the increase in the call volume, the Adult System of Care is now requesting that the crisis triage workers increase the amount of information inputted into two different databases. This will help us track outcomes in a better manner. So with this amendment, the cost will cover the cost of the data entry. As mentioned, the amendment will increase contract expenditures by $129,000 for a new contract total of $1,121,160. $24,000 of this increase is included in the approved budget for this fiscal year, and the remaining $105,000 is included in the department's requested budget for next fiscal year. $51,600 of the $129,000 contract increases from County General Fund. If approved, this amendment contract will comprise of $713,000 in state and federal social services funds and $537,160 from County General Funds over the term of the contract. This contract amendment is on file with the Clerk of the Board for review, and at this time, I would like to answer any questions the board may have.
Board members have any questions, or staff? Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Marie, for the presentation. I'm just curious about the increase in calls. You've got 10% overall call volume increase, and then an increased referrals of over 25% in the past three years. Do you, can you tell me why you think that?
We believe it's, well, one, mainly because of the APS calls. We're having more older adults, people are living longer, and during the economic downturn, there was more increase in related to fiscal abuse for older adults. And now we're having more just APS calls alone.
All right.
Because of the critical nature, you know, our older adults are living longer, they have more health issues, and we're trying to help them stay at home, but there's concerns there.
And I thought it might be because of the incredible job that they're doing at the call center.
They're doing a great job for us.
Good, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions by board members, any members of the public want to address the board on this side and private action? We'll bring it back to the board for motion.
Mr. Perbel?
Yes, sir.
We have motion Montgomery and Second Wiegand. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number seven. This is a Public Works item, Final Environmental Impact Report Certification Project Rule for the State Route 89 Fanny Bridge Community Revitalization Project. Mr. Peter Kratz, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Happy to be here today. Peter Kratz, again, with Public Works for the record, here to present Department Item Number 7A on the Fanny Bridge Project, otherwise formerly known as the State Route 89 Fanny Bridge Community Revitalization Project. Before I get started, I just want to make mention of a few folks in the audience, representatives from the Tahoe Transportation District that represent the lead SEQA agency on this project, and then the Ascent Environmental Consultant Team, who was the team contracted by the TTD to do all the environmental work for this project. For my presentation today, I will summarize the environmental work completed on the project, and then Placer County's role with the project. I will then ask for your response on the four main actions articulated in the board package before you. Before I launch into the details, though, here you see two pictures on the first slide showing existing conditions in the focal point of the project area, that being Fanny Bridge in Tahoe City, which tends to be a pinch point for various modes of travel, including automobile, public transit, pedestrian, and bicycle, especially during the summer months. The bridge was built in 1928, and it is also a bridge that is classified as structurally deficient with a SD sufficiency rating of 57 out of 100, which allows it to be eligible for federal funding and be rehabilitated or replaced. It's not in a state of imminent failure or collapse, but the rating qualifies the bridge to be addressed for repair within the next seven to 10 years. But the project before you today is much more than just repairing the Fanny Bridge. Here's a slide showing the project location, and a reminder how project planning accelerated through federal funding with the Federal Land Access Program. The Tahoe Transportation District took the lead on the project back in 2011. Through that leadership, the Tahoe Transportation District submitted an application to the Federal Highways Administration for, otherwise known as FLAP, funding. The application consisted of a package of three mobility projects, including the Fanny Bridge Project, the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail Project, and the Meeks Bay Shared Use Trail Project. And I'll point those out. Let's see, there's our project area right there in Tahoe City, and these other two trail projects are here. I think it made it for a successful package by showing the mobility needs of North Lake Tahoe and West Lake Tahoe by not just doing one project, the Fanny Bridge Project, but showing the other needs for multimodal connectivity that we need in this part of Lake Tahoe. So a little bit about the project with respect to purpose and need. Lots of historic planning occurred going back to the early 2000s that sped up in 2011 when the Tahoe Transportation District took the project on as the lead SEQA agency. Placer County's role as a SEQA responsible agency is twofold, as you've seen in your package. We have committed $3.29 million to the project to help leverage over $20 million from FLAP funding that was secured for this project to build it. And the second reason as a SEQA responsible agency is that with this selected alternative that I will describe in a minute, Placer County will likely become the owner and operator of the existing Fanny Bridge and about one-third mile of existing State Route 89. So again, a long process. I want to take a couple slides here to remind folks of what the project intent is, which is to, and I'll summarize as you see on the slide here, address the aging infrastructure of Fanny Bridge, address the current and future vehicle congestion that occurs in this area, address the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, improve the connectivity of the Tahoe City Transit Center, Tahoe Rim Trail, Lakeside Trail, and downtown area of Tahoe City, and furthermore, improve the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, improve the freight mobility and emergency access, as today, there is only one river crossing over the Truckee, which is the aging Fanny Bridge. One more slide on our purpose and need, which I think is important for everyone to remember, to help promote economic revitalization and improve walkability on the west side of town of Tahoe City, enhance recreation through improved access to the rafting location, the Tahoe Rim Trail, and soon to be two museums in this part of Tahoe City. And then obviously, in the bottom part of the slide here, on the lower right corner, you implement or support the goals of the various plans in alignment with those plans that all call for a project like this to occur. In the environmental review process, seven project alternatives were analyzed, and following the process, TTD, as the lead SEQA agency, approved Alternative 1 as the preferred project alternative. A summary of the project alternatives can be described as follows, and I'll do some pointing after I describe, summarize these alternatives, but I think for the record, it's important to know about all seven alternatives studied. Alternative 1, the selected alternative, consists of a new Highway 89 alignment and bridge over the Truckee River. I'll just point to that now. Right through here, and this is through, this land is owned by the U.S. Forest Service. The transit center that we have is right here, and this crosses, again, U.S. Forest Service land, this new alignment, and bridge over the Truckee River southwest of downtown and converts existing Fanny Bridge and existing Highway 89. Fanny Bridge here, this section of existing 89 converts that to a local road with full usage for automobiles, public transit, pedestrians, and bicycles. Alternatives 2 through 4, which I won't show here today, they also consist of a new highway alignment and bridge over the Truckee River at this location, and convert Fanny Bridge and existing Highway 89 as well to a local road. But what's different about Alternatives 2 and 4 is part of this road is terminated, so it limits vehicular access through this area to only pedestrians and cyclists and public transit. Alternative 6 and 6A, that I also don't show here, there would be no new highway alignment, but it would rehabilitate or replace Fanny Bridge and make it wider to reduce vehicular congestion and promote more walkability on that section of highway. Finally, Alternative 5 is the no-build project, which is typically always studied in the SEQA analysis, of which, in the next few years, existing Fanny Bridge would go through some level of rehabilitation, like I discussed at the beginning of my presentation, based on its low structural deficiency rating, but no other improvements would come about. As a result of the TTD selecting Alternative 1, I will present some renditions of the preferred project. This perspective you see in front of you is looking east towards downtown Tahoe City, showing what's called the West Roundabout, where the new bridge and new Highway 89 alignment begins at its north terminus and crosses the Truckee River heading south. This perspective zooms in on the new bridge crossing the Truckee River just south of the new West Roundabout. As you see here, this perspective shows the existing, I'll say, existing trail network along the Truckee River being preserved and graded separated below the new bridge to provide full uninterrupted access for pedestrians and cyclists. This perspective is similar to the preceding slide. Of note here is that we have trails on both sides of the Truckee River to ensure connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists going north to Squaw Valley, east to Tahoe City, and south through the 64-acre Forest Service land. This perspective shows a key element of the preferred project, which is to convert the signalized Y in downtown Tahoe City to a single-lane roundabout. It should be noted that the existing Y-island streetscape improvements that are there today and the vegetation that exists there will be salvaged and relocated to the maximum extent possible, should the project be built. Another key element of the preferred project is what I call complete street concepts that would apply to the existing Fanny Bridge and Highway 89 section, as you see here. There's existing Fanny Bridge. This is the existing signalized Y in Tahoe City. This would be the new roundabout as part of the preferred project called the East Roundabout, where the traffic coming northbound would split. Traffic going to town would take this existing 89 section that would be converted to a local road. People traveling further north to Truckee I-80 would take the new mainline highway to the left here. The bridge in this section of existing Highway 89 would become Placer County's to operate and maintain, assuming we approve its final condition based on the common criteria of making sure it's in a state of good repair before we accept it. Today, it is operated and maintained by Caltrans. The emphasis on complete street design is to reconfigure this section of highway into a multimodal corridor that calms or slows vehicular traffic and promotes walking and cycling through elements such as narrower vehicle lanes and providing sidewalks, Class 2 bike lanes, and center and shoulder landscaped medians. Ultimately, the final product should promote town access for the traveling public coming from the south, and for those whose final destination is I-80 or some other destination to the north, it encourages them to utilize the new auto-centric mainline highway to the west. Again, that in there, splitting out. Additionally, I should mention here that the community has spoken out about mobility east of the project in the downtown core of Tahoe City, and specifically the congestion that occurs on Highway 28, with pedestrians crossing the highway and the high traffic volumes particularly happening in the summer. The department has launched a mobility, excuse me, a mobility study for downtown Tahoe City, and we believe project improvements proposed through that study that will be completed later this year will integrate well with the Fanny Bridge project. I did want to illustrate one of the alternatives not selected by TTD, known as Alternative 6A, that does not propose a new highway section but keeps all traffic, pedestrians, and cyclists on existing Highway 89, as you see here. To address the project's need and purpose, widening of Highway 89 and Fanny Bridge would occur under this alternative to help accommodate all modes of traffic. Again, showing this alternative is for information purposes only. This alternative was not selected as the preferred alternative. This perspective of Alternative 6A zooms in on the widening of Fanny Bridge, which would also include transforming the signalized Y to the north to a two-lane roundabout. One of the concerns of this alternative was the impact to private property access and the need for significant right-of-way from private property owners nearby, like the bridge tender. All right, all that said, so now we get down to the meaty part of my presentation today and my request. With all that overview, I want to state that Public Works has been a very proactive participant on what's called the project development team for this project through attendance and engagement at various planning meetings and agency hearings, and review and feedback on the various environmental documents accompanying studies and preliminary design plans. In addition, through previous actions of your board, the county has shown support for project planning and development through the commitment of project funding. As the board memo states, the Tahoe Transportation District Board of Directors, as the lead SEQA agency, took action on the project on April 10th, 2015, which included the approval of the project SEQA Final Environmental Impact Report, approval of associated SEQA documents, including the Fact of Findings and the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Plan, and approval of the preferred project identified as Alternative 1, Option 2, which includes a roundabout at the Tahoe City Y. Based on the review of the environmental analysis, environmental impacts, environmental mitigation of those impacts, public comments, and response to public comments contained in the final SEQA documents, our department concurs with TTD's actions of April 10th, and that Alternative 1 is considered to best meet the project's purpose and need. As detailed in your board packet, the slide before you represents a summary of requested actions of your board today, of which Actions 1 and 2 essentially mirror the actions taken previously by the TTD, the lead SEQA agency. I will also point out that under Action 3, the department requests your approval on providing additional clarification for project mitigation to address traffic conditions at Grand La Bocan Road and Highway 89 south of the project area after the project is built. More specifically, on Action 3, the resolution before you clarifies the county responsibility in the SEQA Final EIR and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Plan to be proactive on initiating project improvements at Grand La Bocan Road, assuming the intersection level of service is degraded as a result of traffic conditions that change due to implementation of the Fanny Bridge project. That concludes my presentation, and I stand before you to address any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Questions of staff, by board members, before we open it up to the public? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions by any board members at this point. So we will go ahead and open this up to the public. I know that we have folks, or I'm assuming that we have folks up in Tahoe who would like to be heard on this item, but we'll go ahead and start here in the chambers, see if there's anybody here in the chambers from the public who wants to address the board.
I'm disappointed it's only me. I hope there's a lot of people in Tahoe.
Good morning, it's still morning. My name is Kathy Kodelak-Hemmen. I represent Tahoe City Shell. I first want to thank several of the supervisors who had, took the time to have the discussions with us about the future of Tahoe City. The business of Tahoe City Shell, Tahoe City Store, has been a family business that I've been involved with for over 18 years at this point. There is no doubt in my mind, the business is going to be devastated by the construction of the bypass. There are several businesses, our key competitor is a Chevron next door, who I know is at the meeting in Tahoe City, that sit in what we fondly call the death zone. If you imagine the bypass coming this way, Highway 89, Fanny Bridge this way, you create a nice little V. Those businesses are going to lose 60% of the traffic that currently goes by them. These are not our numbers, these are TTD, Alfred Knox, and the entire team. 60% of our traffic will be diverted. The majority of traffic that would return from the west shore in turn to go towards Incline Village will never even know the businesses beside us exist there. Ourselves and the Chevron represent your highest taxpaying bases in this particular area. They will be gone. In the last 10 years, this community has experienced a 40% reduction in population. A lot of it's due to economic downturn, all the second homeowners, all of that pulled from the area. Caltrans Traffic Council... Caltrans traffic council support, the reductions have been tremendous over the last 10 years. The proposals and the need to build the bypass are based upon an increase off a 10-year-ago number that population and traffic would increase. We don't have the increase. In our worst seasons, which are our best seasons, we have had a six-week backup. This is 35 million when you add together the county's portion, the federal money put into, the cost overrides of our taxpayers' money for a bridge that is not falling down. When the study was started, our belief, and I was part of the community outreach program, was that Fannie Bridge is falling down. It's going to fall down, we need to build something else. We accepted that as true. Once we got the specifics of the minor repair work that is needed in the scope of rebuilding a bridge and the condition of the other bridges in our state, it was ludicrous that this wasn't even an issue. I respect the additional exit that's needed for residents of the west shore in the event of evacuation, strongly support that. Our problem is one of infrastructure. If you take a one-lane road of people exiting the west shore and throw it on a two-way bypass, you're going to end up on a one-lane road. I don't care what direction you're going. The design and the unique structure of this beautiful lake says all you've done is move congestion from one point to another point. And I get used to that. I'm strongly not in support of it, and I think as responsible supervisors, you have to look at the businesses you're supporting and representing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next member of the public here in the domes before we jump up to Tahoe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Larry Beem. I'm a resident of Rockland, California. I'm also one of three partners owning a residence at 540 Kimberly in Tahoe City. This residence that overlooks the Truckee River and the U.S. Forest Service 64 acres has been in our family for over 40 years. For all of those 40 years, our families have enjoyed the escape from the urban environment of the greater Sacramento area and what has been a pristine location in a quiet and rather secluded setting. There is little if any traffic noise, no intrusion, no overhead lighting, no Caltrans signage visible from our property. But all that will change if the proposed bypass is approved. This will impact not only our property, but all the properties on Kimberly Drive, and the homeowners are very concerned about it. So, the sad part is, this doesn't really have to happen this way. There's another very viable alternative. And as of right now, our property values have already decreased, because if we choose to sell our property, we have to disclose that this is a proposed highway going just below our property. Anyone familiar with Tahoe City would have to agree that there should be improvements in the air quality and the traffic flows. However, the local business community and homeowners strongly object to alternative one, which calls for a new bridge, very intrusive bridge over the Truckee River, not looking like an Alpine setting, but more like an urban setting. Some 10 to 15 feet in height in order to provide sufficient clearance over the river and constructing a new roadway through the 64 acres to connect to State Route 89 on the east side. I can't think of a more intrusive, expensive, and unnecessary way to address the existing traffic problem and destroy an otherwise pristine public land. I've been following this project since 2003, and in 2004, I requested and reviewed all historical documents in the possession of the U.S. Forest Service and their South Lake Tahoe office relating to the 64 acres. A 1975 Tahoe City urban design study consisting of some 67-plus pages with voluminous appendices indicates the priorities of the acre, 64 acres, is to, quote, "establish regional recreational parking and staging area with trail system and public open space." Public open space, not a highway. There is no mention of a bypass through the 64 acres. And in fact, a handwritten note on the file by someone within the Forest Service indicates most of this area is wetland soil. So I got curious, and I thought, what is the significance of designation of wetland soil? According to the EPA website, it changes the way development is permitted. The objective is to reduce the causes of wetland degradation. Our economic well-being and quality of life largely depends on our nation's wealth of natural resources. We must now take positive steps to protect wetlands to ensure that the functions and related values they provide will be preserved and present for future generations. I can only hope that your consideration of this wetland soil issue when evaluating other viable alternatives won't affect the 64 acres. Couple of other reasons that I object to this project going through 64 acres.
If you could quickly, please.
It ignores the most reasonable alternative, six A, because the best use of public land is not to pave it or destroy it, but to keep it natural. Because trees would be cut, parkland would be paved, and the Truckee River serenity would be forever changed, and this is counter to public land's goals. And a 10-foot elevated highway cutting across the river through the park will create an eyesore in the middle of the park in the open space and effectively bifurcate that park into two parts. And since the bypass was first proposed in 1994, and this was just mentioned, some 21 years ago, the traffic levels have declined almost 25%. So what's the real need for this enormous project when six A would take the existing bridge, widen it, take out the light at the Y, put a roundabout in, and I think handle most of the issues? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else here in Auburn wish to address the board on this item before we see if there's anybody up in Tahoe? All right, seeing nobody, okay. If there is anybody up in Tahoe, and they can go ahead and get themselves seated, that'd be great. Go ahead and take one more here in Auburn. Our sound guys can go ahead and mute Tahoe for us for a minute. We do have one more here in Auburn.
Look at that.
Ramona Brockman.
Hold one second. We're going to have mute our Tahoe. There we go. All right, go ahead.
Ramona Brockman from Loomis, California. I just have one quick question, or a couple of quick questions, also addressing the need for a bypass. It seems like that need may no longer be there. And also, to look into different alternative transportation up to the Tahoe City area. I know the Denver area has a train run by Amtrak that takes skiers and other vacationers up to the Denver ski slopes, and I believe Tahoe does have a train station from Amtrak? No, it does not?
Truckee.
Oh, Truckee has one. But just looking to see if there's any other alternatives, because, you know, the impact on I-80 coming through Placer County is extreme. Denver had a very similar situation. They do run a ski train, and I thought that might be something to look into to see if there's some other form of alternate transportation that would cut down on traffic and pollution and carbon emissions as well. So I thought that would be an interesting thing to look at for our area.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else here in the domes? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and kick it up to Tahoe, and please introduce yourself before you begin with your comments.
Hello, my name is David Roscoe. I am manager of Tahoe City Chevron. I am here to read a letter on behalf of Mr. Jim Sajak that was not able to attend the meeting today. I and everybody at Tahoe City Chevron support Mr. Sajak's views. So here we go. As a member of Placer County Board of Supervisors, an obligation exists to make ethic and justified decisions which are beneficial to the taxpayers of Placer County. On April 29, I requested justification from the director, staff, and board of members of Placer County to provide the benefits to the taxpayers of Placer County for spending $3.2 million and taking over the annual maintenance costs associated with Highway 89 and Fannie Bridge. This comes at a time when Placer County faces a $4 million financial reduction in tax revenue resulting from continuing lower fuel sales. To date, there has been no response or justification provided from Placer County. Caltrans, like Placer County, is facing current and future reductions in highway funding. The recent Caltrans deputy directive shifts funding priorities from construction to new sections of highway to maintaining current highways. This may explain why Caltrans is not financially involved in the bypass project. However, Caltrans will be provided with an enhanced maintenance yard. Placer County will also be responsible for funding the annual maintenance for items such as streetlights, benches, landscapes, and sidewalks. To date, how the annual maintenance funds will be generated has never been disclosed to the business community. Currently, our bike and pedestrian trails are closed for half of the year, and the bus shelters are being maintained by nonprofit community organizations. Members of the community have met with Senator Diane Feinstein and staff. The senator and her staff are reviewing the environmental and financial impacts of the proposed project against the goals and objectives of the Lake Tahoe Restoration Act. Under the Lake Tahoe Restoration Act, the environmental impact benefits must outweigh the project cost and impacts to the environment. The only gain from this project is shortening the travel distance to the west shore vehicles by approximately 200 yards. This minor gain does not outweigh the negative environmental economical impact and economical impacts the proposed projects with an estimated cost of $33 million is believed to not be supported by the Lake Tahoe Restoration Act. The Placer County Board is being pressured to support a project which resulted from a misleading and falsified funding application. Fannie Bridge was determined to be structurally sound. 400 bicyclists and pedestrians per hour was not surveyed at Fannie Bridge. There is no abnormal safety condition. The pedestrian signal at Fannie Bridge provides safe and controlled crossing. There have been, there have never been two-hour backups. The traffic congestion is through the commercial core at Fannie Bridge. The TTD stated it should not be noted that some or all concept delivered may not improve levels of service to levels normally considered acceptable. Why Placer County spends $3.2 million on a project that more than likely not resolve the current conditions? I request that the Placer County Board of Supervisors do what's ethical and vote against the current proposed project scope-based on unjustified expense to the taxpayers of Placer County. Let's first address traffic problems which exist through the commercial core. Sincerely, Jim Sajak. I completely agree with what Jim said, and I completely agree with what Kathy Hammond just mentioned. We are definitely in a down spiral. A bypass or us being in the kill zone like Ms. Kathy Hammond specified does put us in a world of hurt. Not only are we already struggling to maintain our doors open and actually collecting tax funds for more projects to actually be available, a 60% decrease would more than likely either cripple our business or shut us down. So we are here really opposing alternative one, and I hope the board supervisors understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your concern. Do we have anybody else in Tahoe that wishes to address the board on this side?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Zach Hymanson. I live in Tahoe City. I live in Silverado Drive, which is in the Grand La Bocan area, and would be affected by the construction of alternative one, particularly the effects on the Grand La Bocan and Highway 89 intersection. And I'm wondering if the board members could have staff elaborate on their statements about item three on your list of items to approve today related to the mitigation measures for that intersection? I'd heard staff say that they have a proactive strategy in mind. That's not described in the environmental document that I last saw, but maybe there's been some new information or new thinking on that.
Thank you. After we completely public comment in Tahoe, I'll make sure staff address that, address that. Zach, could you do me a favor? And do you have any idea how many other folks are there that are interested in?
It looks like one, two, three.
Okay.
And possibly four, three to four.
That's great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Cindy Gustafson, general manager, Tahoe City Public Utility District. Want to thank you for giving us this opportunity not to travel down I-80 today, so thank you very much for this high-tech way to testify before you. Our board of directors unanimously supports alternative one and urges your approval of the EIR/ES. We support that alternative based on a number of reasons. One, emergency access. Two, and evacuation from the west shore of Lake Tahoe. We also believe this provides the best alternative to create additional improved bicycle and pedestrian continuity through the Tahoe City core area. Linking our commercial core is somewhat separated now by the river district and the main part of Tahoe City. And we strongly support the great separation of the Truckee River Trail. That has been a great addition to this project, and as you know, we have 300,000 to 400,000 people using that trail. Unfortunately, not just six months of the year this year, it was almost 11 months of this year that we had that trail open and operational for the public. We greatly appreciate TTD and Placer County staff who've involved us throughout this project through the design and development, trying to address both pedestrian and bicycle as well as utility conflicts in the project. While we understand that change is very difficult for our community, as in any community, we faced it several times with the addition of our sidewalks, the boardwalks, and the Common Beach renovation. In the end, all of these projects best served our community and have enhanced it through the various processes, although it was, it did not come out, did not come without some pain and change to our community. So we greatly appreciate this opportunity to testify and to provide our comments. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Euler and the board. North Tahoe Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Tim Alameda here this morning to support alternative one. Again, it goes back to public safety. It would give us two means of egress and getting into the west shore as well. We don't have that right now. Our experience of the Washoe Fire and some of the other times when it's very crowded in the area, it's difficult for us. Even on daily responses, apparatus coming out of Station 51, don't use the yield lane to get through Fannie Bridge. They square the turnoff because of the, they go out square and then go down 89 because of difficulties there at that intersection. So we believe this would be a good addition to public safety as well as getting the bicycles and the pedestrians. We have issues there also. We've had our staff involved in the process from the beginning. Captain Widdam, who was also one of the first responders at the Washoe Fire, and he had his apparatus stuck right on Fannie Bridge during that incident. Chief Schwartz, coming in as a strike team leader out of the Nevada side, was stuck in the middle of Tahoe City during that incident. So we're concerned. We think it's a good alternative, and we would support it. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Jamie Wright, and I am the executive director with the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. On behalf of the TMA and our board of directors, we would like to support alternative one. We have had the opportunity to sit on the revitalization community outreach team and had a lot of community input as well as kind of evaluating each alternative within the project. Alternative one is the only alternative that is going to give us two points of ingress and regress for the west shore. It also is one of the only alternatives that actually improves the enhancement of the Tahoe City Transit Center and will improve connection times and mobility in general through that corridor. Right now, that corridor can be generally pretty difficult for those to tackle as well as where the transit center sits and connects with all of our routes here on the north shore. So thank you very much for your time today, and thank you for allowing us to speak from the north shore.
Thank you, Jamie. Is there anybody else there that wants to speak, Jamie?
One more.
There is one more. Okay, great, thank you.
One more. My name is Ron Trebus. I'm from Tahoe City, California.
I'm from Tahoe City, California. And just for transparency and not for any credibility, I do work with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I'm on the Tahoe City Public Utility District Board of Directors, and I am the north shore member on the Tahoe Transportation District Board and did vote for the recommended alternative. Throughout this whole process, I have expressed concerns of community members during the development of the alternatives and the EIR to ensure that all were well addressed very thoroughly to confirm in my mind that the best alternative within the greatest level of environmental assessment was being brought forward and consequently was able to vote in support of this. I think the main issues that did keep coming up from the community and some of the members speaking here, as well as in Auburn, are close friends. We do business together. We play together. But those did, I think, surround traffic, the direction of traffic, the safety, the pedestrian bicycle conflicts, and then the economic concerns too. All of these, I think, have been addressed again in coming up with the best solution for providing some level of adjustment to all of those that would benefit this community. Other county-funded studies, of which the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Board, which I'm not speaking for but did recommend funding for, that have been completed or are underway to further enhance and to extend the benefits throughout Tahoe City as extensions of this project are the Tahoe City Community Plan, the Tahoe City Parking Study, Tahoe City Mobility Study, and then the EPS Economic Analysis. And all of these were done with extensive community input and outreach, far beyond what you're hearing from just the few of us today. And then, most recently, Federal Highways Administration has come in and done a pedestrian safety audit to recommend adjustments and changes to encourage safer and less auto-conflict mobility, including longer use of walkways and trails that could probably and possibly involve snow removal during the winter to be able to use the trail and walkway system. So, I very strongly recommend that you do support and adopt the resolutions as prepared and recommended by the county staff, who's done an excellent job throughout this whole process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. And can you confirm that you're the last speaker up there?
Sure. I am the last speaker.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Leave it to Trebus. All right. Seeing no other public comment, we will go ahead and bring this back to the board for any final questions, thoughts, consideration before we entertain a motion. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, thank you. I was hoping that, Peter, you might just address a little bit more fully Zach Hymanston's question about the Grand Lebakan intersection.
Sure, Supervisor Montgomery. Bear with me. I'm going to go to the resolution that's in front of you today, just to make sure I'm thorough. As a backdrop here, the mitigation for Grand Lebakan Road is already stated in the SEQA final EIR. But what we did, or what in terms of your staff report, in terms of a resolution, is add some clarifying language in terms of just what the actions we would take. So, what the mitigation says in the SEQA document, and I'll just, out of context, read the most important part. It says mitigation measure 4.15-2A. Implement improvements for the side street movements at the Grand Lebakan Road intersection with State Route 89. Four of the proposed build alternatives, including the preferred alternative known as Alternative One, would create a site-specific impact on the local transportation system when analyzed against the projected operations for the no-action conditions. Article 15.28010 of the Placer County Code establishes a road network capital improvement program. The payment of traffic impact fees funds the capital improvement program for area roadway improvements. Placer County has already identified the State Route 89 and Grand Lebakan Road intersection as a future capital improvement program project. The project is not defined at this time. However, the improvements will modify the type of control at this location to reduce the delay for side street movements on Grand Lebakan Road. Placer County is the agency responsible for this mitigation measure. That's in the SEQA document. What we've proposed in your resolution to add as clarifying language is this. Upon the project improvements known as Alternative One being accepted as complete, Placer County will begin the environmental studies needed to identify the required intersection improvements at the Grand Lebakan Road and SR-89 intersection, provided the actual increase in vehicular delay is equal to or greater than that reported in the draft EIR/ final EIR for the projected 2018 no-action conditions. Should the vehicular delay increase following project implementation, potential intersection improvements for consideration may include, but are not necessarily limited to, lane striping on State Route 89 for a refuge lane to serve vehicles turning left onto northbound SR-89 from Grand Lebakan Road. A second consideration would be lane striping on State Route 89 to provide a left-turn pocket for vehicles turning from northbound SR-89 onto Grand Lebakan Road. And a third consideration would be signal warrant analysis of intersection and installation of a signal or roundabout, if warranted. So, I think that added language, hopefully, a lot of discussion about this mitigation measure and the commitment by Placer County to do something about it. But we just want to reserve the right that, you know, when this project is built, we will monitor it. We don't want to monitor it forever. We're very clear that we monitor it during a peak part of the season, when traffic is at its higher volume, to verify that, yes, traffic conditions have changed there to warrant the improvements to be built.
Okay. Thank you. I did have a couple more things I just wanted to touch on. I think all of these I've discussed with you in the past, but there are issues that were brought up by members of the community that I really just wanted to daylight and talk about the conversations we've had. So, the first you already touched on, which is the planning for relocating things like the public art, the fish, the memorial tree in the middle of the Y. There's a time capsule there that they want moved but not opened, which could be interesting. And we are looking at how, if the configuration of the Y changes, we can move and relocate all those as part of the project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. One of the concerns that the gas station folks have raised with me and have raised more generally is, you know, this concern that 60% of the traffic will be no longer flowing past their particular businesses. I know that the town of Truckee struggled with this when they did their 267 bypass. It used to go through downtown Truckee. There were two gas stations in downtown Truckee when the bypass went in. The way Truckee dealt with it is increased signage on the freeway and in some other areas, and just drove through downtown Truckee a couple days ago, and there are still two gas stations in downtown Truckee. I note that one of them has done a fairly substantial improvement project, and the other seems to be in the middle of an improvement project. And so, I'm guessing that with adequate signage, with, you know, our computers that we all use now and handheld phones to tell us where to get gas, that we can address the concerns so that people know there are businesses in Tahoe City that they may very well want to stop at and get gas. So, do we think that signage, some of those other opportunities could be implemented at or near the roundabouts so people could stop to get gas?
We do, very much so. And we're very, and I didn't talk a lot about wayfinding signage with this project, but it's very important that we have that in both directions coming into Tahoe City from the north and the south. And we have proper signage or appropriate signage that shows where the businesses are located, particularly the gas stations, in terms of being able to locate those. And we've talked a lot about calling what would be the local road now Business 89. So, there's some synchrocy with smartphones and things like that that doesn't go away, that there's a good connection in terms of how people can find those businesses. So, I think going forward, as we get into detailed design, those things are very important. This is a very important part of this project, to make sure the businesses flourish, like I think they believe they've done with Truckee as a very similar example.
Okay. And then, can you touch just on phasing, how we envision this project would be phased? Because one of the concerns that I've heard from folks is, you know, oh, my gosh, what happens if this is all torn up and we can't move around at all?
Very good question, and I think one of the, you know, one of the things that was highly considered in selecting Alternative One, because what will happen in my mind in terms of construction phasing is the new bridge and new section of 89 would be built first. And so, existing conditions today for traveling across Fannie Bridge and all that will continue while the new infrastructure is built. Once the new infrastructure is built and put online, traffic will be converted to the new Highway 89 and new bridge, while the existing Fannie Bridge and section of 89 is retrofitted and upgraded, as described in the project. So, there should be kind of a seamless or smaller impact to traffic than under, say, Alternative 6A, where you're trying to do everything on one section of roadway.
Okay. And then, on a related topic, just in terms of how pedestrians and bicyclists use that area now and how they'll use it in the future, the new section or the old section of road, which would be newly Placer County's responsibility, is envisioned to have basically sidewalks on both sides for pedestrians? Is that correct?
Correct. And hopefully, the availability or space for Class II bike lanes, possibly parallel parking. The other thing I wanted to mention there in terms of just mobility, well, you said it, sidewalks on both sides.
Okay. And that segues to my last question, which I know is probably near and dear to Cindy Gustafson's heart at the Tahoe City PUD, which is, do we see this particular proposal, as well as the improvements on Highway 28 through Tahoe City going east, as an opportunity to leverage our efforts to finish the missing link of bike path in Tahoe City?
Yes, yes. And trying to keep things straight, in my mind, it's kind of one project at a time, but I do see those efforts of the Tahoe City Mobility Study. One of the key elements of that study is that missing trail link between Fannie Bridge and Commons Beach, making that link come to fruition finally after all these years. So, that's a big effort. Again, it ties into all the efforts of this project, providing that non-motorized mobility between this site of town and then downtown Tahoe City.
Okay. And I misspoke. I did have one last question, and that is, a number of people have raised the concern of the bridge height of the new bridge as compared to Fannie Bridge and its existing height off the river. Do you have any rough, or maybe this is something for TTD, but do you have any rough guess or estimate as what those two bridges would be in relation to each other?
I don't, and I should have an idea on the differential, say, between the existing Fannie Bridge and the new bridge. I don't have that dimension in my head, and maybe someone could speak to it, either from the environmental team or from TTD. The rendition that we showed earlier, I think, I mean, I think it is a fairly accurate rendition of trying to keep it fitting in with the environment, as you see in that rendition. And so, and really making sure that the trails on both sides are preserved and have the adequate clearance that they need and the not turning them into tunnels. I think that's a key part. I know we mentioned at Nitrec the other night, the idea that those trails are, if you look at the big network, and I don't have a map to show you, but making sure that the trail heading south along west shore doesn't have to cross the new section of highway. Down there, there was concerns about that. People can, there'll be a splitter island for people to cross there, but they can go to the south side of the new highway alignment, make their way up to the Truckee River if they're coming from the south, and cross under the new bridge. So, again, very, you know, sensitive to preserving all that connectivity without creating more conflict between the vehicle and the pedestrian and the cyclist.
Okay. And I do have to take one thing to task on the rendition, which is there's actually water in the river.
Right.
Yeah, that's coming.
That's what I was thinking. This keeps up, we just do an at-grade road and call it good.
Yeah. Sad. Thank you. Those are all my questions. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Does any member of our consulting team have an answer to that question in terms of the height of the bridge or the Transportation District?
Good morning. Carl Hasty, District Manager of the Tahoe Transportation District. The environmental document kind of assessed the worst-case scenario for the new bridge, which did talk about an eight-to-10-foot type of fill near the Caltrans Yard in order for the roundabout. The actual design that we're looking at, though, is not going to require that dimension in terms of a bridge width and the two-lane roundabouts. So, now we're looking at half of that, maybe four foot of fill on that when it comes to that roundabout design in that current location. So, that's what we're anticipating right now.
And then, the bridge height?
The bridge, yes. Where the current highway is right now, and the new roundabout would be by the entrance of the Caltrans Yard.
Yeah.
That is the fill area that will.
It's four foot above current grade.
Correct. That's what I understand from the designers right now. So, you know, that can vary as design goes, but in terms of worst-case being a four-lane bridge and a two-lane roundabout that require that type of height, now we're really looking at, with the old road remaining open and a roundabout at that location, is our ability to restrict that to a two-lane bridge and a one-lane roundabout. So, the requirements then start to be less.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran, you have a question?
Yeah. How much money have we spent on this since inception? Peter?
Good question, Supervisor Duran. I think county money, a pretty small amount, if that's what you're getting to. You know, on the order of $200,000 or less in terms of staff time and engagement on this project.
Okay. Since inception?
Since inception. And we became very engaged probably back in, again, a long history with this project. We're back to the early 2000s, but from, what, 2011 forward.
Okay. I appreciate your counting that. You know, and this is no pun intended, but, you know, I have a tendency to go and keep my mouth shut, and towards the end, you know, I say something, and for me, I've got to get off the bus here. And here's why. Because I haven't really heard any justification for the replacement of, or the building of a new bridge. All right? I've heard, I want to show off my new public transportation station. I've heard the safety issue, which, you know, is a valid concern. But over the course of the last 10 years, I've heard folks that are saying that, you know, the traffic studies just aren't there. And, you know, I read this packet that was put together, and I forget who put this together, and there are allegations in there and emails that are saying that the bridge itself is no longer, you know, in that particular classification. I think one of the things that I struggle with, specifically in the Tahoe area, is the need to get people in there for economic purposes for a short period of time or, you know, to generate revenue, with also the need for folks that want to maintain what they have. And, you know, my issue with this particular project is scope. And I do think that if it's possible to, you know, maintain what we've had in the past with Fannie Bridge, and even if we have to do, pay the money to buy those rightaways, you buy them. And if there is truly a safety concern, you put a two-lane highway that goes, you know, where it needs to go. And those people that don't need gas will take that road, and the people that do will go into town. So, that's kind of where I am in this. So, I will be voting no on this project, just for everybody's edification, and I just wanted to let you know why.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments before we entertain a motion? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board at this time?
I'm glad that we take the requested actions and the recommendation items, one through four, on the Fannie Bridge project.
Second. Okay. We have a motion. Montgomery, we'll give the second to Holmes on that one, and we will have a roll call, please. Holmes and Wigan said it almost exactly at the same time, but I think Holmes had him by a nose. But. Holmes? Duran? Wigan? Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler? Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and move on to item 8A. This is a discussion by our board and hopefully others regarding challenges and choices as we look at our 2015, 2016 budget opportunities and challenges, and, in fact, four years beyond 2015, 2016. And Andy Heath will be ably leading our conversation today. Andy, go ahead and take it away whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Chairman Euler, members of the board, Andy Heath, Deputy CEO for Finance and Budget. What I'd like to do for you today, with Becky Riggin up here, is go through the fiscal year 1516 proposed budget development process. And part of the process that we considered this year was actually providing the board with an update on some of the things and some of the themes that we're finding as part of the development of the budget for the coming year that will be recommended to you on June 16th. As we went. As we went through the budget process, we realized that there were significant, there were some significant themes that were resonating as part of the supplementals that were being submitted by the departments in the county. And with that, we wanted to really call those out for you, because there are certain challenges and choices, as we're terming this item, that will ultimately need to be considered for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, but more importantly, long-term, because as you'll see, many of these items that we'll be discussing today in the six resonating areas do have a common theme that could stand to benefit long-term with purposed funding long-term. What I'll be doing today is just giving you an overview of the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen budget fiscal information as it stands today. Then we'll be going through the fifteen, sixteen priority initiative areas, which is what we're calling the six areas that we'll be discussing in detail, and some of the supplemental requests that you'll be seeing as part of the proposed, recommended proposed budget in June. And then we'll discuss each priority initiative overview, and then we'll entertain any questions or comments that you might have at that point. Looking at some of the fiscal information, the way the budget is shaping up for the coming fiscal year, what this graph does is it indicates for the two major operating funds in the county's operating budget, the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, which comprise the majority of the operating services in the county. When you look at the estimated carryover fund balance that we anticipate will result from the current fiscal year, and this is the fund balances that will be, that will remain, revenues over expenditures essentially, in the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, we estimate that approximately twenty-three-point-six million dollars will accrue to the General Fund and carryover fund balance, and about seven-point-eight million in the Public Safety Fund. Of these amounts, when you move over into the development of the budget for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, in the base budget, and this is just the static operation of services throughout the county before considering any supplemental requests that are submitted by the departments, the base budget itself requires fifteen-point-seven million dollars in the General Fund of the twenty-three-point-six in carryover fund balance from the previous year, and the Public Safety Fund requires two-point-four million dollars in carryover fund balance, for a total of about eighteen-point-one. The fifteen-point-seven million dollars in the General Fund carryover in that base amount is, are actually three things that can be called out as one-time items that your board approves year-over-year as part of the budget and financial policies, and that is the contribution to capital, where we actually have a four-point-five million dollar annual contribution to capital, and then a three-point-eight million dollar annual contribution to roads, and then there's a six million dollar, just over six million dollar appropriation for contingencies, which is one-and-a-half percent of the operating budget in the General Fund that is also budgeted at that level, at one-and-a-half percent. So, of those amounts, when you add all those together, it's about fifteen million dollars or so, so that makes up the majority of the base budget requirement that is needed from the prior year's carryover fund balance.
Andy, let me stop you there, and first of all, I want to encourage my colleagues, if you have questions as we move forward, just light up your lights, and I'll do the best I can to recognize that you have a question and call on you, but I just want to make sure that we're clear on our terms here, because when you say that we estimate a carryover fund balance of roughly twenty-three million dollars in our General Fund, and yet for our base budget purposes, we need almost sixteen million of that, is that the right number?
That's correct, right.
By definition, how can you have a fund balance carryover if you needed that money to be spent on an annual basis anyway? So, if we could kind of address some of those terms, I suppose.
And that's a good question. Essentially, the way the budget is put together, and moving forward as we put future budgets together, is to really reduce reliance on that carryover fund balance, where a carryover fund balance averages between, I'll say, up to thirty million dollars a year in the General Fund. A portion of that amount is due to, a major portion of that amount is due to salary savings, which can be thirteen to sixteen million dollars a year, depending on the year. That amount will carry over into, as carryover fund balance, unspent funds at the end of the year, into the coming year's budget. One of the things that we've done actually with to arrive at the fifteen-point-seven million dollar base budget for fifteen, sixteen, and what we're estimating we're going to need in that carryover fund balance, is actually work with departments to budget a credit to salaries, where we're eliminating that portion of the salaries that we know likely are not to ensue because of fluctuating position filling cycles and just attrition, et cetera, where we're actually taking about seven million dollars between both funds, the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and crediting that as a salary savings amount based on prior history. So, that's why you're seeing these carryover fund balances that are required to balance the base budgets actually come down, they've come down from prior years.
Right.
And we're estimating, you know, a larger carryover fund balance in the previous year, so that is what's making up the ability to recommend and consider supplemental requests from the departments next.
And we have consistently, I recall, fund balances in the thirty-million-dollar range historically, and we have consistently driven that down just by year-over-year identifying, since we have now a pattern of several years of not filling these positions, why don't we just take them off the books, not fund them in the first place, thereby reducing that carryover fund balance at the end of the year? And that's kind of been the board's policy, is figure out how to drive that delta down.
And that would be ideal, that would absolutely be ideal. The carryover fund balance that you would, that you would hope you would have at the end of any given year would be that contingency, that contingency amount that you build up?
The contingency, and then any true savings, any true operational savings that do result from what at the beginning of the year was established as not only a priority-based budget, but based on actual needs for service delivery, and yet over the course of the year, through efficiency, technology, whatever, you achieved savings, now you have a carryover fund balance that's actually a result of savings, as opposed to just a place that money got parked for another year.
Right.
Okay, so, eighteen-point-one million of that carryover fund balance will be needed for the base budget in both the General Fund and Public Safety Fund combined. And then in the final two columns, what I've listed here is what will likely be presented as part of the proposed budget as we move forward for fifteen, sixteen, that will come to you in June, and the recommendations that will be ongoing recommendations and, of course, the one-time recommendations, where in the General Fund, there's just over seven-hundred thousand dollars in ongoing recommendations, and this will require ongoing funds for ongoing programs. And then six-point-five million in one-time funding from that remainder of the carryover fund balance. And then in the Public Safety Fund, about three-point-two million dollars in ongoing funding, and point-nine million in one-time funding. So, when you add those two together for those supplemental requests, there's about eleven-point-three million dollars in supplemental requests that are being considered for those two funds as part of the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen proposed budget. What we found is when we actually looked at those eleven-point-three million dollars in requests, was about nine-point-one million resonated in certain areas, in these six areas, and this is what we'll be discussing with you today because of the importance that they have for the county. These six noted areas are capital and deferred maintenance funding sustainability, environmental sustainability, Placer County Library System Planning, Criminal Justice Master Plan Implementation, Placer County Fire Funding Sustainability, and then succession planning, talent management, and employee engagement. So, each one of these areas is, and always has been, a priority of the county and/or is one of the initiatives that is of the county's importance as well. Looking at how those supplemental requests have broken down, what I've got here is each of the six areas that we'll be discussing, and the amount of the supplemental requests that are made up in each one of these six areas that will be included in the fifteen, sixteen proposed budget, and you can see that in the first column there, where you have just over nine million dollars in supplemental requests. And then in the second column, there's another amount that adds up to about two-point-seven million dollars, and these are additional supplemental requests that are likely to be considered with adoption of the final budget pursuant to this discussion, and also more analysis that is done between proposed and the recommendation of the proposed budget and the final budget when it comes back to your board in September. And then the total amount of the supplemental requests that are being looked at in each of these six areas is about eleven-point-seven million dollars. Jumping into the areas, the first area we'll be discussing is capital and deferred maintenance sustainability, and what we did with each of these areas is we're looking at the policy considerations that staff is looking at in terms of recommending to your board what is ultimately part of the fiscal year, the proposed budget that's coming for fifteen, sixteen, looking at the policy considerations, and then the fiscal considerations as well will be on the next slide, and then you'll also see the recommended action that we're likely to bring back with the proposed budget. So, for capital and deferred maintenance sustainability, your budget and financial policy guidance that's actually in the budget document itself and part of the budget financial policies calls for funding from the General Fund, to the extent General Fund discretionary funding is available, funding of priority projects in the Capital Facilities Financing Plan. We do have a Capital Facilities Financing Plan, and just last year, for the first time, we actually introduced for your board the five-year multi-year plan that we actually have all capital listed in, both the capital projects and the road projects, anything that is capital that your board considers now on an annual basis, and that will be coming with the budget process this year as well. As I mentioned, annual General Fund funding for capital is about eight-point-three million dollars that is built into the budget, four-point-five million dollars for capital, and then three-point-eight million dollars for roads. We also look at the property tax and lieu funds that are received on an annual basis and true up with final budget each year, that amount into the capital projects to the extent that it is received, and that becomes a resource towards capital. There's dedicated funding provided by the Capital Facilities Impact Fees, so these impact fees are collected rate based on the amount of development that transpires in the county, and these amounts actually go into the, into reserves as well until they're used and become funding sources for capital. And then there's a funding for deferred maintenance, generally is limited to project needs. So, in the past, since the recession era, there's been very little money that's actually been put into deferred maintenance, other than what is identified as part of the budget process on an annual basis. And to the extent we can get in front of this and begin to fund deferred maintenance on an ongoing basis, that would allow us to get ahead of the schedule. And then priority projects and funding sources approved by the annual budget process that are part of the multi-year capital plan, as I mentioned, and then, of course, the Capital Facilities Financing Plan. Looking specifically at some of the fiscal considerations, there is one-time funding that's currently available for capital projects that is held in the General Fund Reserves and in the trust funds for the Capital Facilities Impact Fees that have been collected, of approximately sixty-seven million dollars. This amount goes, is one-time funding that's available for future projects that have been identified as part of the Capital Facilities Financing Plan, and in those projects that haven't had a funding source dedicated to them specifically yet that are mentioned in the five-year capital plan as well. As we go through and work with facilities and your board to recommend projects for the future, this becomes a funding source to the extent that the county wants to spend this money for those projects and pay cash for certain projects. Additional annual funding for deferred maintenance has been limited, as I mentioned, however, in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, in the current year's budget, your board did approve one-point-two-five million dollars additional money for deferred maintenance, a million dollars specifically for the road overlay program, and then another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand specifically for trails maintenance. And then funding for deferred facilities maintenance is typically provided on an as-needed basis. What you'll find coming before your board with the fifteen, sixteen proposed budget next month will be a continued dedicated General Fund funding of eight-point-three million dollars, consistent with the way the budget's been prepared in the past for capital and roads, and then a one-time General Fund contribution of about three-point-seven-five million dollars for deferred facilities maintenance, about two-point-five million there, and we do have a list, we've been working with the Facilities Department to create a list of projects that will make up that two-point-five million dollars. And then again, similar to what we did for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, another million dollars towards roads, and then two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars towards trail maintenance. So, this is likely what will be coming to your board as part of the proposed budget for capital and deferred maintenance. And just stopping here and pausing momentarily, if you look at this item, and then if you, when you start to look at each of the other five items that we will discuss that are these priorities and initiatives that are before you today, you'll notice that they're, to the extent we are able to build in long-term funding and actually consider as part of our multi-year planning model, fiscal planning model, long-term funding towards any of these areas, it would really help the budget process significantly, so, we want to be able to look into that. Next area is environmental sustainability, and this focuses on two areas that the county is working with, which is the Placer County Conservation Plan, or the PCCP, and Placer Legacy. Placer County Conservation Plan provides a common strategy approach for all state and federal requirements related to just getting the land in place for conservation. Regulatory coverage with this plan will be provided for fifty years for land development activities, and at this point in time, the planning phase is nearing completion. It will get completion to transition into an implementation phase where we're actually considering putting this plan in place and creating the JPA at some point in time in the near future that will handle this. Placer Legacy secures open space to help achieve conservation elements of the General Plan that are noted in the General Plan. It's not as much of a regulatory program, but focuses on broader conservation goals in its county-wide in scope. Previously, before the recession, there were sums of money that were transferred from the General Fund on an as-needed basis for, towards Placer Legacy, that had stopped for a number of years, and when you go over to the fiscal considerations, we can talk about that, but on the legacy, we're funded by a combination of General Fund contributions, grants, and gifts, and that has waned of recent late. And then with the PCCP, the PCCP annual operating expenses are going to be approximately four-point-three million dollars once the plan is implemented, and then three million dollars for in-perpetuity stewardship costs, and then the annual land acquisition cost for the permit term will be approximately thirteen-point, thirteen million dollars per year. All of this will be funded by a financing plan that is included as part of the PCCP overall plan, and will ultimately be funded by developer permit fees with some federal and state money, so there'll be ultimately little impact to the county. However, having said that, one of the recommendations that we're bringing forward to the board this year is a PCCP Program Administrator that you will see as part of the proposed budget recommendation for about two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars. This individual will be responsible for setting up the PCCP program and actually bringing it to its finalization, looking at budgets and work plans, grants, financing strategies, land selection, monitoring, a lot of different activities associated with this plan to get it, to get it to a point where actually, when we do have the JPA, this person will likely be part of that as well. So, that's two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and then there's six-hundred-and-thirty-three, and that's ongoing at this point, and then there's six-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars in the General Fund for PCCP document finalization, so that is also going to be recommended, and that's a one-time, one-time.
Supervisor Holmes has a question.
Regarding the program, PCCP Program Administrator, the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, how much is that as staff costs? Do you have any idea how much that goes into staff?
I believe all of it is staff cost, that if Lauren Clark is.
Supervisor Holmes, I believe that is staff cost, benefit, and overhead all bundled together.
That is eight positions?
Yeah, that's the executive position that would be hired to run the, ultimately to run the Placer Conservation Authority.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then, again, Lauren, for clarification's sake, these dollars that we see represented here, as well as what we have spent thus far, are all put back into the finance model that generates the fees that are being paid, correct? There is a recoupment provision for these over time.
All the costs incurred for plan preparation have been built into the finance plan, that will be repaid back over the fifty-year permit term.
Right.
So, any General Fund contribution that we've made during plan preparation and even early implementation, day one of year one, are all reimbursable costs with the county and the City of Lincoln.
Yeah, including some of the property acquisitions that we have made that have resources on them that we can then sell as mitigation ourselves as part of our state head provision.
Or apply to our own projects.
Right, or apply to our own projects, thank you. Okay.
Okay, and then the other action with the fiscal year fifteen, sixteen proposed budget that you'll see will be Placer Legacy Contribution, which will be anticipated with the final budget, for, actually the final budget, not the proposed budget, for a million dollars. So, to the extent one-time funding is identified, we will recommend a million dollars to be contributed to the Placer Legacy Program, consistent with what's been contributed in prior years. Moving on to the third area, this is the Placer County Library System Planning, some of the policy considerations. Recently, your board did approve a library strategic plan, and that board-approved plan included three initiatives within it, to reverse the erosion in the services that has resulted as a result of revenues, not keeping pace with expenditures, primarily because of the collection of property taxes and the downturn in the economy's impact on land values that ultimately impacted those property taxes, modernize operations, and then building capacity for the future. Structural budget deficits impedes these initiatives right now, where we actually have a structural. a structural budget deficit, which the next slide will, slide will cover. And for the last several years, you've actually budgeted, when we put the budget together, a deficit or a use of reserves in the library fund just to meet the current needs. And then cost savings, savings measures over the past several years have really restricted the operations and further eroded services and these are cost savings measures resulting from the fact that we do have to budget structural deficits and we, we have to look at the costs overall to keep those costs down. Some of the fiscal considerations, library has a $6.2 million budget in the library fund, which is a special revenue fund of the county. And then those annual budget deficits range from about $200,000 to $400,000 each year. This is what we anticipate the library will spend in reserves and/or carryover fund balance each year as part of the budget process. However, because of what was covered on the previous slide, where they're actually looking at cost-cutting measures and, and saving money over time to the detriment of certain service levels, those numbers, the $200,000 to $400,000 really don't play out, plays out to about half of that ultimately when the, when the budget, when the fiscal year is completed. There is a dedicated property tax, which is about $4.3 million and it represents about 73% of all the revenues that do come into the library. The annual general fund contribution, which the library does get currently, funds the county librarian position and all but $100,000 of the A-87 or indirect costs associated with running the library. And for 1516, that's estimated at about $791,000. This number has fluctuated primarily due to the A-87 amounts. Over the last several years, it's fluctuated greatly over time where it's been as high as $1.3 million that the general fund is contributing and it's been as low as what it is now, which is about $591,000, which is if you take out the librarian cost. So that number fluctuates significantly and we've looked at that. We've actually gone back and looked at all of the costs associated with A-87 for running the library and we feel that what, what is in there now is representative of exactly what should be in there so that we can get a more streamlined level of costs associated with not just the library but all A-87 activities countywide. And then the library fund reserves are currently at about $450,000. So you can see that if the budget that we're recommending with 1516 today of about $329,000 library deficit comes true, they'll be burning a significant amount of those reserves. With the 1516 proposed budget, we will be recommending $400,000 in additional one-time general fund support be provided to the library. $200,000 of that will be specifically for materials, e-resources to bring the library more modern in terms of the materials that it does have and then to study an automated materials handling program for $10,000, which is part of that $200,000. And then another $200,000 to partially bridge an anticipated shortfall in the library for, forecasted the $329,000 shortfall that's forecasted for fiscal year 1516. To anticipate it again, they probably won't use all of that $329,000 as you typically have a carryover fund balance. So this $200,000 may be the bridge that they need to at least break even, if not come close to breaking even. And then consider local community proposed solutions to closures. Recently, your board has had some conversations regarding the Loomis and Meadow Vista libraries and our proposed budget doesn't do anything specifically with those libraries at this point in time. However, we do want to come back to your board in January with some options that may be considered for repurposing the libraries and/or looking at potential closures associated with Loomis and Meadow Vista. So that will be, coming back to you in January as well.
Supervisor Holmes?
And so Andy, you're saying that the libraries will stay open through the end of the, this calendar year? Is that what we're suggesting?
The, the library budget, if, if, if Loomis and Meadow Vista were to stay open all year, we would have to look at staffing models and actually go back and, and reconsider the, the fiscal impact of those staffing models. We'd have to do the analysis with that and that's something that pursuant to this discussion today, we're prepared to do between proposed and final to the extent necessary and bring back to your board.
Right, thank you.
What those changes may, may bring.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Chairman Neuland, I just wanted to let you know that I'm saving actually all my comments on these various items until the end of the presentation so that I could just go through at one time.
Whatever you prefer.
Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, I was just going to say on this whole library issue, I'm okay with going to the end of the year, but anything longer than that, you know, I've got to see progress. I've got to see some hard progress. If they're this close from implementing a plan, I'm more apt to give them some extra time, but if they're this close, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions.
Okay. And we can bring something back at proposed budget next month and, and give you an indication of exactly where we're at with that.
You, Supervisor Wagen, you have something on that?
So yeah, just would echo that and my image that I'm left with is that with those closures, what we were able to do is elevate overall our library services because of the cost of service in those smaller locations were more difficult, but I'm certainly open to seeing how things adjust and our contributions as per discussions we've had with the town of Loomis. So just, just so you know, similar reaction.
Okay, I don't see any more questions, if you want to continue on?
All right. All right, so now we will turn over to a couple of priority areas that revolve around public safety and I'll have Becky where we can go through those.
Good afternoon, yes, we will talk about two areas for public safety, criminal justice and fire services. And after initial implementation of public safety realignment, your board and our justice partners initiated the criminal justice master plan project. The goal of this project was to assess the justice system and identify policy and funding priorities necessary to position Placer County for continued success with this legislation. On February 24th of this year, your board was briefed on a series of recommendations resulting from the two-year process. We discussed at that time that many of these recommendations would require several years to be fully implemented. Today, we, we are discussing the key areas recommended for implementation fiscal year 1516. They are to add jail capacity, to enhance in and out of custody programming and community reentry and to enhance supervision of these individuals as they return to our communities. These recommendations focus on what happens to offenders once they are sentenced. So by adding jail capacity, we are ensuring that we have sufficient room in the county jail for folks who need to serve their sentences there. With the development of the prep center and the service contract with the Sacramento County Office of Education, we are integrating a step-down process and in constructive use of offenders' time while they are in custody with treatment, educational and vocational training and recognition that these are critical elements for those who are determined to change their lives and achieve successful reentry to the community. And finally, with the addition of five probation staff, we are enhancing community supervision to ensure accountability and compliance with court orders and bringing caseload supervision to optimal levels for oversight and early detection of behaviors that suggest the need to pull these folks back into the system for further interventions. So these recommendations are included in the proposed budget. They are the result of comprehensive discussions with the sheriff's office, probation and with SCOE and they recommend the key, and they reflect the key recommendations of the master plan funding priorities. They do however, require the growth of all the AB 109 and Prop 172 funding in addition to increased general fund. Expanding jail capacity is a two-year process. The first year will require half-year funding for 25 new sheriff's allocations for an amount of $1.7 million, which will expand a full-year cost of approximately $3 million. In addition, the sheriff's office anticipates the need for approximately 30 additional staff to fully implement the plan and to allow for a booking station in conjunction with bringing on the South Placer Arraignment Court. We are also recommending adding five deputy probation officers for $476,000 along with $67,000 for new vehicles. And then as we have discussed previously, SCOE contract and the amount of $978,000 brings in over a dozen new programming options that will be targeted to offenders based on their risk and need assessments. So looking ahead, the sheriff's office is evaluating applying for the H63 grant funding, which is capital funding from the state for jail expansion. This could assist with our future discussions about possibly redirecting the bulk of correctional services to the Santucci Center. And given the changing, changing legislative landscape over the last several years with Prop 47 and other laws that have been enacted, this will help the sheriff outline their jail capacity needs for the next several years. So we are joined by Captain Hutchinson and Chief Hopper and we are all available for any questions on this item.
Supervisor Grant has a question.
Yeah, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the implementation of the criminal justice master plan. You know, we're spending six point, looks like $6.2 million on, on the plan and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that we're also looking for savings in the implementation of the plan, such as rolling out, you know, the, the programs that are going to help recidivism. So we, we have data collection resources to make sure that we can track what the, what the data says and what those savings are going to be. Is that, is that correct on an ongoing basis?
Yeah, we have had some discussions around the data collection piece of that. As you are aware, we have a criminal justice policy committee meeting scheduled next week and we have, we have this on the agenda for that topic to begin the formal identification of collecting that data and bringing it back to your board on a regular basis. Data collection is part of the SCOE contract. They will be providing quarterly updates on the progress and the results of implementing those programs, but we need to have some discussions on bringing back some data from the balance of the system to see how things are working there and to inform our future investment decisions.
And by fully funding this, these implementations, we're also preserving any of the monies that we're getting from the AB 109. Is that correct, the grant programs?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is an important point. The future for funding in this, in this area is based on our performance. So we do need to demonstrate to the state that we are doing our best to implement the intent of AB 109 and they will be basing future allocations based on our success with that.
And in thinking through the transition to a fully operational Santucci Center, West Placer Adult Correctional Facility, we're also going to be drilling down on the existing facility up here in Auburn because obviously we can't maintain both. And is that part of the, part of the recipe as well?
Yeah, absolutely. And to the sheriff's credit that they have taken great steps along those lines. We are bringing 180 beds online at the Santucci Center this year, but that reflects a net add of 104 and that's because they have taken a look at the operations in Auburn and have redirected some of those resources for this purpose.
Okay. Captain, do you have any comments with regards to that?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Captain Hutchinson from the sheriff's office and the jail commander, I'm just very excited for this opportunity. It's just, you know, that the jail's been sitting down there waiting for people, for us to put people in. Not only that, just the ability to begin programming, working with the courts, the probation office, the DA, the public defenders and, and CEO's office in HHS, all of us working together to make this work and actually get to the place that we do have a reduction in recidivism. We're actually helping some people once they get out of our facility or in our facility and as they get out of our facility. So hopefully it does turn it around and that, that's the whole plan and the criminal justice master plan is, gave us that direction and that, that's where we're going.
So it's the old philosophy about the copper pipe versus the, the metal pipe. You, you, in order to get better savings and, and, and longer use, you have to spend money to save money, right?
Right, especially right now. We're just, we're in that transition phase, so you're going to see it, some money right now, but hopefully at some point we start really looking and fine-tuning things and honing the edge a little bit.
All right, thank you, Captain.
Supervisor Wagen.
Yeah, just a quick thanks on all of that. I know it's a huge effort and just drilling down, Jack kind of went through my litany of questions, but on the data notion, that's been discussed past conversations, is there going to be a recommendation for SCOE contract? Will they come back with some kind of a comprehensive basis for how we should most efficiently look at all of that?
My understanding is from the SCOE contract, they can take a look at the result of the, the response, or the services they are responsible for, but I think taking a look at the broader systems or the macro level indicators, that would require the involvement of the full state leaders. So like I say, those are, that's the reason we put this on the criminal justice policy committee agenda to start that this week. So SCOE's, SCOE's outcomes will be limited primarily to the investment that they will bring into the system of new additional programs.
Also, I guess just in that we're looking for a complete comprehensive package here, any issues that, you know, make sure you bring that back to us and keep us posted as to progress we're making, issues that we might need to deal with.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so we will move on to discussing fire services. So a little context on this issue, as your board is aware, fire services in Placer County are provided through a combination of municipal and other independent fire services. They're provided by the U.S. Forest Service, by the state of California and also by Placer County Fire. Placer County Fire is comprised of one county service area made up of several separate zones of benefits designed to be self-funded through a combination of defined property tax, share and direct charges voted on by the taxpayers in each of these zones. For fiscal year 1516, Placer County Fire Services cost exceed available revenues by $1.6 million. So the total cost increase was 1.8 minus $200,000 in revenue growth. Placer County Fire is provided through a labor contract with CAL FIRE. So CAL FIRE contract increases, as I said, were $1.8 million or 21% year-over-year increases. These are projected to further increase 3% to 6% over the next two years. So the, the revenue increases range from 7% to 22% within those zones of benefits based on property valuations. Now these cost increases are primarily due to negotiated salary and benefit increases and while these are hitting this in this next, in this next fiscal year, these, CAL FIRE has not had negotiated increases for the past eight years. So in, in response to this challenge, county, the county asked CAL FIRE for contract reduction alternatives. So the $9.3 million CAL FIRE contract assumes net service reductions of $1.4 million. This has been a series of conversations that have resulted to this 1.4, so let me walk through that a bit more. To fully close the gap that was identified, it would have required operational impacts to the Dry Creek Station. So we included, we recommended use of some reserves or anticipated fund balance to fully fund an amount of, I'm sorry, $510,000 to fund the capital expenditures for the radio project, which were planned and to fill the balance of $200,000 in operational impact to avoid further impact to other stations. Your board will also recall that the Ofer Fire Station was slated for closure in 2012 after voters in that zone turned down a ballot measure for a special fire tax of $40, which would have provided funding to maintain their, their service level. Residents in that zone currently pay the least for fire service per single-family home of all the zones in the county. That measure required a two-thirds vote to pass, but instead 59% of the voters said no to that measure. The Ofer Fire Station would have closed at that time, but the county was successful in acquiring a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, or SAFER, grant that sustained the, the station for the past two years. That grant has now expired and the community has not identified any other funding sources. So given the impacts of the multi-year drought that we are all acutely aware of, your board may wish to consider some bridge funding for a portion of these fire services. We understood the most impactful being the closure of the Ofer Station and the brush truck. So should your board opt to sustain those services through the current fire season, we have anticipated a one-time cost of approximately $670,000 to do so. And that would be $420,000 for half-year of the station costs and $250,000 for the brush truck cost. So John Mackel Downey, our Fire Services Program Manager and Chief George Morris from CAL FIRE are here and we're all available to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Grant, you have a question?
You, you know, a couple of things and I think we started off our meeting with a group of folks from Forest Hill that were really concerned about, you know, the status of our fire safety funding and how we're going to manage things in the future. And, and I think moving forward, you know, I, I really don't have a problem gapping, you know, until the end of the year, until the fire season. I understand that the four positions over at Thunder Valley, that's more of a tribal contract and a tribal funding issue as opposed to a, a county issue, although it does have a safety nexus. You know, moving forward, I think it, it's going to really take a lot of thought from both staff and, and this is not to kick staff around, but I, I, I tried to understand this whole zone of benefit thing from the prior emergency services. of benefit thing from the prior emergency services representative from the county, and, you know, Warren Buffett has a theory that he doesn't invest in anything that he doesn't understand, and I'm just going to kind of hijack that and say, "I still don't get it." But putting that aside, I think we have a real opportunity, not only an opportunity, but a duty to take a look at how we service these things. We just had a situation over in the west side where fire folks were fighting for a ladder truck, all right? We have three ladder trucks within a mile of that location. Why do we need another ladder truck when all the statistics are telling us that most of the calls are happening now are service calls? There are no two-story buildings anticipated for Placer Vineyards. So, I think, you know, with that in mind, we have to take a look, a hard look at the model and how we fund this, because I don't think, and I don't mean this in any disrespect, but I don't think it means that we're building six and seven million dollar stations anymore. I think there's a different model that works, that'll work better for us as opposed to one that's working for South Central Los Angeles where they have, or even Sacramento, where they have multi-story buildings. But those are the kinds of questions that we're going to have to answer in order to maintain a sustainable model moving forward. And I invite, you know, everybody to latch onto that, because that's really the only way that we're going to true the ship and maintain safety for everybody moving forward. That's my comment that I saved from the beginning.
Supervisor Waggon.
Yeah, I contribute some comments also that referred back to this morning's, it's great to see a lot of people here are concerned, and I appreciate all that, and I agree with Jack that, you know, in some ways as a county, we have a special position, I guess, to take a look at this comprehensively, although interestingly, counties are not required to provide fire protection, which I always find kind of odd, but nevertheless, we have an opportunity to take a more comprehensive, big-picture perspective. And so, one comment I want to make is, I think, based on comments this morning, there might be this sense that there's some public safety revenues that are unused, that are just available to help backfill some of these deficiencies among the various special districts or special fire protection districts. And of course, reality is, we'd be taking monies from somewhere else to shift it over there, and of course, that would be less than fun. So, my goal, my interest, I guess, is I'm real happy to take a look at that, look at this whole question. I would specifically want to look at the long-term viability of a solution or solutions. I'm not interested in looking at backfilling some deficiencies for another couple of years, because I've been around long enough to see that fire protection and the impact it's having, particularly on the smaller districts, is becoming more and more challenging. We've had a complete reversal of county policy from the time that I've come here to what it is now as it relates to incentivizing the smaller districts to grow. And I think for us to help better understand a very confusing, complex model, it would be good to see what different areas are contributing as compared to the cost. I know we have that data because we track it. That becomes a point of contention even sometime. And really, though, look at what do we need to do for a model that's sustainable over a 20-year period at least, because I'd be very interested in engaging in those kinds of conversations. There are, I'd see Ian is still here, and some good folks out there that are very well-intended, and I think we might can help find some solutions, particularly if we all work together.
Okay, and one thing I did not mention is that we have included in the proposed budget $100,000 for a study that we hope will guide us through some of these discussions, and I think all of us who work on this concur with your observations. This is a very complex, difficult, historical funding situation to fully comprehend, so we look forward to having those discussions with all of the chiefs and with all the interested parties and work towards that long-term solution. I think we're concluded with this discussion at this point. This is just a summary of all the reductions that were identified by CAL FIRE. If your board would like to have any discussions around these or any explanation, I think these were included in your staff memo.
All right, so, the final area that we'll be discussing this morning has to do with succession planning, talent management, and employee engagement. Basically, to provide a continuous level of professional staffing countywide, we need to consider some of the things that are on tap in terms of our employees in the future. Forty-one percent of all the employees in the county are 50 years or older. Forty-nine percent of management and confidential employees are eligible to retire, so about half of all the managers and confidential employees can retire at any time. And then 34% of the total workforce eligible to retire. This is an issue. It's an issue that we really need to get in front of, because one of the things that we're confronting now is an exodus of a lot of knowledge that is leaving the county with certain retired employees. And to promote employee engagement and leading to a highly motivated and productive workforce, we need to have a plan, a succession plan, where we're actually looking at these key positions and then doing something with them so that we don't have the exodus of knowledge that goes with these employees as they walk out. Some of the fiscal considerations are to consider our continued funding support to employee and organizational development and training programs. The county does have an organizational development program that's in place. It's funded at this point, it's funded in the base, and we have a very robust training program, and just continuing to foster that will go a long way. We also have some planned enhancements to our current system that's used for HR and payroll, which is our Acorn system or a PeopleSoft system called E-Performance. E-Performance will begin to track electronically employee performance goals as aligned with department performance goals, as aligned with countywide performance goals, and then bringing in the whole priority-based budgeting prioritization that will ultimately ensue as we go down the priority-based budgeting path, and intermingle all of that so that we have a workforce that is working towards their own development and their own talent and career development, but at the same time delivering the performance goals of the department and the county and all the priorities that the board puts down. We have a new funding source for a succession management program, which I'll talk about in just a sec, and then continued integration of internal communication with the employee portal and social media, and beginning to use these mediums to actually get out to our employees and make sure employees know exactly from an organizational perspective what's going on and how they can be an integral part of our workforce, which they are. One of the things I mentioned was a new succession management program, where we're looking at taking a portion of the salary savings that is being built into the budgets, in the base budgets this year, which is about $7 million, and actually offloading that into a new program for succession management, where we will have a program in place for departments to actually tap into to have the ability to overfill certain key positions that have been defined as part of a succession management plan, so that that individual, whether it's an internal employee that is due for a promotion and will succeed somebody in a certain position and/or an outside employee, they will be able to work in tandem with the person that is retiring and has indicated that they will be retiring for a period of time. Depending on the position and the knowledge, that period of time could vary, but having money set aside outside of the departmental base budgets and some departments inability to absorb those costs as part of their base budgets in a separate program would be beneficial and go a long way towards succession management. So, that's what we're recommending with succession planning. Any questions on that? No, okay. So, that's, those are the challenges and choices. So, as you can see, there's six key areas in the county that are resonating throughout the majority of the supplemental requests that your board will be considering as part of the fiscal year 1516 budget. At this point in time, we'd be happy to answer any questions or entertain any comments you might have.
Thank you, and thank you for indulging my desire to wait until the end of this presentation to make comments. I really wanted the opportunity for everybody to hear the totality of the issues that are facing us before really weighing in, though I want to say that my fellow supervisors raised some excellent points and some real issues of concern, many of which I share. I'm just going to start at the top with capital, deferred maintenance, funding, those sorts of questions, and I know this is not an action item, you're just looking for direction and input today. One of the things that I think we should really think about as a board and as a county is looking at the fact that we have an incredibly good credit rating and that interest rates are historically low right now, and looking at any opportunities to finance some of the new infrastructure projects coming forward, rather than continuing to rely upon creating pots of money that we then use supplemented by general fund dollars. I note that there were, on slide seven, there were $8.3 million in general fund monies that we were looking at putting toward this larger conversation, and my question would be, you know, are there pieces of infrastructure we could potentially finance that would not eat into that 8.3 million that we could then put to repairs, improvements, roads particularly? I hear so much from people about the state of our roads, and so I would suggest that we look very closely at those different alternatives to see, is there a better, more effective way for us to use our dollars than we currently are? I don't know what the answer to that will be, but I think it's really worth looking at. Moving on to the environmental sustainability portion of the presentation today, I have to ask it, because I ask it every time, what and how would the implementation of these projects mean to Tahoe? How would these be implemented in Tahoe? We have environmental sustainability issues in Tahoe, as well as in the west end of the county, that I would hope would be addressed under this. Lauren.
Supervisor Montgomery, the Placer Legacy Program is a countywide program, unlike the PCCP or Placer County Conservation Plan, which is really Western Placer County-focused. There is a potential, even with the Placer County Conservation Plan, for capacity beyond that. There's, there would be staff coming into that program who have the ability to write grants, supervise grants, et cetera. We haven't looked at what that additional capacity could be, but certainly there is a potential to utilize the services of that conservation authority even beyond the boundaries of the Placer County Conservation Plan, particularly with offsetting revenues that are possible.
That would be great, because as you and I have discussed, and I've brought it up with David Bosch in the past, I'm particularly concerned with water management, the Squaw Creek improvements, the Trekkie River. We lost our planner who was very focused on those sort of hydrologic issues, and I think there's some opportunities to use some of these dollars to refocus on the hydrology and the effects for environmental planning, so glad to hear that. Thank you. Moving to the library discussion, I heard a lot about how we've been budgeting ongoing structural deficits, and that just seems like really poor planning on all our part, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody in general, but I'm just saying we need to stop thinking about budgeting ongoing structural deficits and figure out how we identify both cost savings and potential alternative financing sources that are supported by county residents generally, to get us back to that level that Mary and her team envisions. You know, the conversation, to a certain extent, has been, "Well, it's not really about money." Ultimately, everything we do is about money. If there's unlimited dollars, we can do unlimited things with it. I think we owe it to ourselves and our community and to our incredible folks at the libraries to have that conversation with the public about, do they have a willingness to fund our libraries more fully? We've never actually had that conversation in a public fashion, and the answer again may very well be no. I mean, the community may say, "I'm not interested in paying another penny more for libraries," but it's a conversation we need to have, and I think, I think we can fully fund our libraries with the monies that you're putting in front of us for a year. I am concerned about this idea that we're going to come back in January and have a conversation about libraries if in December we've closed Loomis and in November we've closed Meta Vista, which is one of the suggestions in the staff presentation. Either we have that conversation before those libraries close, or we just say, "We're not going to close them, let's take a year and figure out how we keep things fully funded and bring additional revenue into the conversation." As relates to Meta Vista specifically, I think we need to, I understand why we would want to close it in November, because of frozen pipes and leaks and damage to materials in the library itself. I think the first thing we need to do is go back to the owner of the building and say, "Fix the pipes. Don't let them freeze and rupture and ruin our materials." And if he's not willing to do that, then by all means, let's move out of that building. But if he's willing to actually bring his building up to the standard that we need it to be for a library, and he's also expressed the possibility that he could lower the rent, I think we need to have those conversations with him. So, you know, my direction would be, let's fund it for more, let's fund it for not just November, December, for a conversation in January, but let's have the conversation in January, getting to Supervisor Durant's concerns about, are we here or are we here? But let's not put the cart before the horse and close the libraries before we actually have the conversation and explore the options. Cart before the horse. Moving to criminal justice, I'm really delighted to see that we are going to be doing this study to really sort of look and see what does our future look like, given, you know, AB 109, I'm forgetting it, Hutch 47?
Crawford.
Crawford 47, thank you, you know, and sort of planning for the future, though I think Supervisor Durant, again, indicated, you know, if we fund the improvements and the expansion at South Placer, what does that do to Auburn? Does that give us an opportunity then to open up new facility in South Placer while closing potentially the Auburn facility? I understand there's about $3 million a year in redundant costs between South Placer and Auburn. That would go a long way to funding the $3 million, I think it is, I saw it in here, $3 million annually towards operations of South Placer. In fact, it would be a trade-off if my math is good. You know, so I think there's a real opportunity there to both move forward with the recommendations, but with an eye toward, how do we save those other dollars on the other end, the other end being Auburn? Wanted to just, again, mention on the SCOWE contract, I was so delighted to have that brought forward, in order to qualify for that AB 863 grant funding, we actually have to implement a lot of those recommendations that the state put on us along with AB 109, so I'm delighted to see this SCOWE contract moving forward. I think it positions us to do really well for that grant funding, and so I think I'm supportive of the proposal, but I think we do need to think more in-depth about how do those pieces weigh against each other, particularly in terms of the two facilities in the county. Fire, my favorite topic. Again, in this case, I think looking at what is proposed, I differ a little bit. What I would like to see at a minimum would be keeping the Ofer Station open year-round, because frankly, fire season doesn't end anymore. It's a year-round issue. I think we can have some discussions about not filling the vacant battalion chief position. It's not filled right now, so I'm not sure, except economically, what an impact that would have. You know, I'm willing to talk about doing away with the fire planner position, but I think keeping the Ofer Station open and keeping the seasonal brush truck fully onboard is critical, absolutely critical. Again, Supervisor Durant's comments about the casino and funding those firefighter positions, that's a conversation that I think we need to include the tribe in, in, you know, really work with CAL FIRE, with the tribe, with us, and figure out what that partnership is. I think we need a full year for another reason, and that is to allow the county time to work with CAL FIRE, with the tribe, with our special districts who we heard from earlier today, to figure out, how do we approach this holistically? Because it's not just about the county and CAL FIRE's issues. We've got funding issues, the special districts have funding issues. Just as I have asked our special districts, and I'm sorry Chief Gao had to leave, just as I have asked our special districts to go back to their ratepayers and say, "What do we do about this? What level of service do you want, and how do you want to pay for it?" I think we have that obligation in Ofer North Auburn. I know we tried it a couple of years ago. I know we tried it a couple of years ago, Meadow Vista tried it a couple of years ago, we were both unsuccessful. I think there's an opportunity to revisit that, and I think the opportunity is now, but if we don't give ourselves a year to plan for it, we're going to fail again. And I do not want any of us to fail, because that is not in any of our best interests. I think we also need, as part of that larger discussion, to absolutely follow up on the conversation about getting rid of, getting rid of the zones of benefit. They, they are essentially sort of unworkable with each other. We need to figure out, are there additional revenue sources that the public supports, and are there economies of scale that we, as the county, CAL FIRE, special districts, and communities can identify to save money? So again, it's a, it's a question of, are there new revenues? Maybe there aren't. Maybe the community says, we like a level of fire service and public safety response that's insufficient. Maybe that's their answer. I don't know. I don't think we should presuppose that, but I think we need to give ourselves and our partners in the fire service and communities the opportunity to have that discussion. And I think those are really all my comments, and I'm not sure how much they align with the rest of the board, but that's where I stand.
The public for any public comments? Supervisor Wiegand?
Just briefly, Kirk and I will remember 20 years ago, how we've continuously, essentially had conversations about trying to enhance the ability to tie our budget to policy and be able to communicate to the public, and I think in the last couple of years, we've made some huge progress, so I want to thank everyone involved in that and feeling really good about the direction we're going in, and like to see it continue.
And along those lines, the only, I don't know if it's a disagreement so much as it's a caveat with the thoughts posed by Supervisor Montgomery on the issue of utilizing debt for, for infrastructure. While I'm not, while I'm not completely fundamentally opposed to that, I, I would very much like to see where debt utilization for the purposes of infrastructure construction can be tied to revenue generation. So getting back to things like the Sunset Industrial Area, where maybe utilization of debt for some key improvements, some infrastructure improvements, then result in greater activity in the industrial area that increases assessed valuations that then ties back to revenue. So I, I would want to see at least a, a cost-neutral kind of a scenario. But to her point, we are dealing with, number one, us having a very good credit rating, which I think, the fact that we've used little debt has something to do with that. And, and the, and the low rates. If, if the major banks can take advantage of them, we should be able to as well. So I, I agree with those thoughts in principle and not opposed to having that conversation. Also, something that Supervisor Wiegand has beat on for 20 years, and that's the issue of our deferred maintenance on our roads. There's that famous chart that Robert likes to refer to that shows kind of that point at which we just kind of fall off the cliff when it comes to our road maintenance, where the underlayman has to be replaced and all those things. And so I think it would be helpful for us as a board to receive an evaluation from our public works folks as to those major stretches of road that are currently part of our county commerce system. I'm thinking of Sierra College Boulevard in particular, that is six lanes of trash right now near Douglas Boulevard. And so it would be, I think, helpful for our board to be able to evaluate these infrastructure expenditures in that context of, we, we as public works professionals think we have X number more years of useful life on these pieces of roadway before it's a 3X expenditure in order to bring them up to some kind of reasonable level of service. I think that would be an entertaining conversation for us to have. Any other thoughts by board members before we open it to the public? Okay? Any members of the public want to address the board on any of what you've heard over the past hour or so?
My name is Ramona Brockman from Loomis, and I wanted to comment on the section regarding library funding. And first, I'd like to thank Supervisor Montgomery for her insight and recommendation for a full year of funding to keep the libraries open, rather than do a six-month extension and revisit the whole issue again. So with that, I would also like to add some other information. I am a member of the ad hoc committee that was formulated by the mayor to investigate the, keeping open of the Loomis Town Library. And so I wanted to provide an update to the, from the Loomis Town Ad hoc Committee and our recent actions. A draft plan for investigating strategies to make the Loomis Library sustainable was created and reviewed last week, and we will review the proposal, proposed final draft tomorrow. The ad hoc committee plan will look at public interest and support in library funding, as well as ID, identifying other funding sources as part of the plan. Our plan outlines a one-year timeframe for our study and proposal. Thus, we are requesting a full year of funding with a six-month progress report. A full year of funding would allow us to seamlessly and more effectively produce a viable solution. We have already begun work by contacting stakeholders and potential partners for funding and scheduled our first investigative visit to Folsom Library next week, I believe. We are committed to finding a long-term and sustainable plan for the Loomis Library that then may be applicable to other branch libraries in our system as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board members. Jenny Nysley, I live in Loomis. I am the Executive Director of the Loomis Basin Chamber and on, a member of the ad hoc committee, and I fully support the comments of Ramona, and I ask that you fully fund the library for a full fiscal year. It would allow our committee time to complete the tasks and the detailed work plan that we have. I'd also like to say that there's no place like Placer County or Loomis, and we're dedicated to get this detail and all the, find a solution to the, all the issues of the library strategic plan.
Jean Wilson of Loomis, and I too would like to request that you give us a full year to work on a plan that can be sustainable, not just a patch. And this would also coincide with your budget discussions next spring. I'd also like to address a question that was raised at the previous supervisor's meeting on this topic, and that was, it was cited that Rockland had given you the library site for a dollar a year, and what has Loomis done? So I'd like to tell you some of the things that I researched and found out about, how Loomis has supported its library. The Rockland site, you probably know, was done with redevelopment money and had to be collected and used in that area. We don't have a redevelopment agency, and there aren't any more anyway, but what Loomis did contribute, the Gates family of Loomis contributed for the library and also the memorial, Veterans Memorial Hall. The land that the, that, that land was given to the county for the library and the Veterans Hall, and the county has owned it since that gift was given. Earl Gates was the principal of Loomis Grammar School. When the library building was built in 1980 and came out of its various temporary headquarters, it was Loomis residents who did all the landscaping around that building, not the county having to pay for it. People in the community came together, Lions Club, 4-H, Fire Department, Women's Club, probably every service group and group in the community, as well as the materials and laborers were given by a local nursery, high ranch nursery out on Del Mar. Likewise, when the expansion was done in 2007, it was volunteers donating labor and materials who re-landscaped around the new expansion that needed, needed that redone. And Loomis did not just sit around waiting for the county to come up with money so that we could have an expansion to our library. That 2007 expansion, the estimated cost was about just under $300,000. About half of that was raised locally, not at the cost to the county. Our Friends of the Library worked very diligently raising money for an expansion fund for many years. They not only had their usual lasagna, may I finish just a few more? Lasagna dinners. They got donations directly, they got bequests, they got memorials, and by the time of the, early 2007, they had raised over $80,000. In addition, you may not know that the town of Loomis implemented in 1995, a library, library fee impact development, impact development fee specifically for the library. And these are monies, all these monies have been collected for a library, not for a community building, but for a library. By the time of the expansion, the, that fee amounted to over $60,000. And so Loomis really has put its money also into that expansion fund. The Friends, after the expansion, raised, had raised the money to pay for the new furnishings in the expansion, to pay for furniture, materials, and all the carpeting. They had, in various ways, contributed many, many things over the years. They contributed the first computers, the computer desks and chairs, many library materials. They supplied all the tables for the community room, the refrigerator for the community room, the piano tuning for the community room. These are not costs that are borne by the county. And they pay for many things that the branch manager says, we could use, we need, could we get, and they pay for those kinds of things that are not in the county's budget for the library. The children's programs that they fund locally cost $500 to $700 a year. And especially the materials budget that is contributed by the Friends of the Library, raised through them and given to the libraries, for the last five years alone, amounted to And that did not all go back directly into Loomis. You may not be aware that since the state stopped funding libraries, one of the, one of the ways that the library system has asked of, for some local money, is that each of the Friends of the Library groups contribute directly into the, the county's funding, the county materials fund, not, that doesn't mean it all comes back to Loomis at all, it goes into the county fund.
May I ask you to conclude your comments at this point?
Okay. And that has been on the order of $2,000 a year. So my point is, Loomis has, for a small town of 6,000, we've worked hard at this being a library, a people's library, and we ask that you give us the year that we would like to have to fund it and get it sustainable so that we can keep our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran, did you have a question?
Yeah, here's my, here's, here's why I can't support that. I've read the, I've read the report that came out yesterday, and the first four months, that report basically goes over what we've done in order to get to this place, so I see duplication. The second reason is, is that if you look at the end of the report, it takes three months after the report gets to the Loomis Town Council, before it gets to the Board of Supervisors. I have no, I have no understanding why it takes that long to do that. If you really want a partnership here, you take the numbers that we gave you, and you run with whatever constituencies that you're going to look at in order to devise a funding source. You don't go and start taking tours of libraries like our library director did for the last four years in order to get to a position of, of trying to determine what the problems are and how you're going to fund it. That's how you do it. And that's why I'm saying, look, this is a serious problem. I was prepared to take a vote two months ago with regards to whether or not we need to close it. I don't see, at least from what I heard, from the two representatives, or two and a half that came from the city of Loomis, really gave me any confidence that anything is going to happen very quickly. But what I did tell you is that if you work really hard at it, and within six months, if you're this close from implementing a plan, I'll give you the extra time. But as far as a year goes, I've got some very, some serious concerns about that.
Okay. I want to, before Supervisor Holmes' comments and before any of the responds, this was agendized as a larger budget discussion. We're drilling down fairly deeply on a particular library that we've already taken budget action, or we've taken, the board has taken an action on. And before we find ourselves in the realm of having a conversation that wasn't publicly noticed about action on a particular library, let's bring it back to the broader policies and not specific to a particular facility at this time. So we, our board was asked under this agendized item to have a conversation about these larger budget policies. So sir, if your comment is more to our, our larger challenges and choices, as was headlined, as opposed to a specific implementation point, we'll go ahead and have that conversation.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name is Michael Otten. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Library Advisory Board, and, and I appreciate your comment, I appreciate your comments, because I think what we have is, we have a failed funding source for maintaining the libraries, and we've talked about it over and over again. And even if we make the proposed cuts, as I understand it, that we're, we're still going to have a problem the way it's funded. And I, I like Supervisor Montgomery's comments about, well, maybe we need to really test what the, you know, whether the public really wants their libraries and, and how much, how much they really love them. I mean, you have a lot of people that express love for their own libraries. And I know other counties, like neighboring Sacramento County, they, they have gone to a joint powers agreement, and they've, and they've had great success with it, and same as the county executives, former county, Samatteo County, they have a joint powers agreement, and, and they have fantastic libraries, and they're well-received, and they're well-supported. And I would suggest that we look at some of these other funding resources. Supervisor Wiegand talked about sustainability, and with the ERAF funding, you don't have that sustainability as, or one of the best bean counters around here, Andy Heath, can tell you that, that goes up and down, and, and so I, I think we need to look, look, look at those issues, and I hope we can continue that, that conversation to come up with a solution where we don't have a lot of people going away feeling like they've lost, or some have won, and you've won on this issue. We have a great library director, we've had a series of great library directors, and they've, they've worked hard to come up with very cost-saving solutions in creating new libraries out of almost nothing, and we have a lot of great libraries, and, and so maybe those are the, the kind of conversations that we need to have and, and maybe find some solutions. Maybe it's, maybe we're in a new age where we, we find, decide that, you know, libraries are no, no longer useful, and we got enough money, we can go out and buy whatever we want to, to read and educate ourselves with. I don't know, but I think those are some of the things we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping your comments and the policy level. Supervisor Holmes, did you want to?
Well, I wanted to address Mrs. Wilson's comments about the library that was gifted by the Gates family. And Jean, thank you so much for your service over the years. Mike Lee had talked to me about, oh, I guess, three weeks ago, about whether that site had been gifted to the county. So I had Jeanine Windishouse, our county treasurer, clerk of the, clerk of the board's office, and the county recorder look into the documents, and the doc, the property was property was sold to the county. Uh, I think it was for the, for the library and the roadway, I'm thinking it was about fourteen thousand dollars. Lot more today, would be worth a lot more today.
Okay.
But, that's okay, but what I was looking for, I was hoping that the library was either, the property was either gifted to the county or sold to the county with the caveat that it could only be used for a library, and it's not there, and I looked hard for that. So, but I appreciate what this, what the town of Loomis is doing, what the Chamber and the Friends of the Library are doing, particularly over the last, you know, few years. Uh, I know Supervisor Lee, uh, when he was on the board, he led the charge to build that library, and when I took office, um, Tom Seth came to me, I don't even think the ink was dry on my signature, and, uh, asked me to move forward with the expansion of the library. And one reason we were able to do it was because of the tremendous, uh, fundraising ability of the Friends of the Library and the community. So I know the community has invested in that library over the years, and I hope we can continue to do that. The report here that, uh, Mr. Sheriff gave me yesterday, I printed out copies for the bo, rest of the board members, so it's a good start. Um, my, uh, I would, I would, I don't have any objection to going for another year. I would rather wait to make that decision until our final budget is ready for adoption because a lot of things can change between today and when that final budget is adopted, when the books are closed and we see exactly where we are, that would be the time where we can make adjustments. And if another six months is, uh, available, I'll be more than happy to, uh, provide that extra time.
And, thank you. Again, Mr. Sheriff, we can't keep it more on the general policy considerations the board is looking at today, that would be helpful. Thank you.
It'll be my pleasure. I understand the, the pain of sitting through long rambling discussions. More than anyone knows. Walt Shear from the town of Loomis, and, um, God, it's good to see Lauren here again. How, but twenty years ago or so, we started working on Plaster Legacy, and it's, and it's finally coming to implementation? You know, you talk about twenty years ago, you began discussing, um, aligning policy and, and spending, and we're getting close. And my point is, government just functions slowly. You know, it really does. And the problem with funding the libraries isn't something that popped up overnight. It's been developing over time since Prop thirteen. And, you know, knee-jerk solutions aren't going to give you successful resolutions. I think what we're looking at is trying to do something like Supervisor Montgomery is suggesting, and that is have a larger discussion about what the community wants as libraries, what the Plaster County community wants as libraries. And that's what we will be doing in our effort, and we would like to have the county as partners in that. I will be glad to meet with you one-on-one, I would hope to, to resolve any issues that you have regarding our plan. And, um, it, I would really, really look forward to you. I'd just try to get something to you so you'd see, we're not just sitting on our hands saying, "Give us a year, give us a year," you know? We really are serious about developing a community-based solution to the library problem. We're looking at the Loomis one, unfortunately, that's not county-wide solution, but I think it becomes a model that can be done in the near future to resolve the larger county-wide problem. So, thank you very much for your time and consideration, and, um, I hope when I call, we can get time on your busy calendars. I can, yesterday, I think it was five minutes each, and I think we can get a few more minutes and clarify issues. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheriff, Supervisor Montgomery, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that the, the conversation about what the community wants and is looking for in libraries was actually held really robustly by Mary and her staff, um, over a period of, of two years, and hundreds of attendees weighing in on that. The real question that is in front of us, Walt, with all due respect, is what are people willing to pay for the vision of the library they want? I, I don't think there's a lot of value to be had, frankly, in revisiting the conversation about what do people want? We know what they want. We need to figure out, do they want to pay for it, and if so, what does that look like?
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyb, uh, Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, and, and that's all, and tha, and that's all I was saying, Walt. I, I, I didn't mean to come off sounding like I was, you know, trashing your plan, I'm not. All I'm saying is that there appears that there's some duplication here, and that we've done a, a really good job of kind of honing down and drilling down on what, what folks want. And I think the time would be better spent focusing on funding sources as opposed to revisiting that. But that's all I'm saying. I'm a pretty easygoing guy. You show, you show me a little bit of effort and, you know, I'll be right, right there behind you, but I've got to get to that sweet spot, all right?
All right. Are there, are there other members of the public that wish to address the board before we close out this conversation? Seeing none, uh, any, well, I can't imagine there would be, any final thoughts from board members of this topic at this point, or have we run the course? All right, thank you very much for a good, robust discussion, appreciate it, and we will move on to our final item, which is a conversation around our Middle Fork project, and I'm sure Mr. Story will take the cue to keep it brief.
I will, as soon as they put up my presentation, or maybe-
There's a project that doesn't have any water, we're not making money, next?
We, yeah, we started the morning talking about the effects of Brett Story, CEO's office, honorable chairman and board. Um, I think they're going to get it up here any second, yeah. We started the morning talking about the, the effects of the drought on the water side and the conservation side. This is the other side of it, which is the power side. So I'll give you a, uh, uh, as by board policy, a one, annually, I give you an update once the books are audited. That audit is now complete, so I'll be able to give this to you. And essentially, it's the first full year of operations under PCWA's control. Um, it's gone very well, the scheduling into the power market has gone well, all of the operations, it's very high operations, somewhere in the ninety-eight plus percent of, of available operations. Invoicing and payments through PG&E and through CISO have all done very well. We have, we have not had any issues that we had to settle. Hydrology, not so, not such good of the side, it's very dry. That was the third year of the drought. Obviously, we're now in the fourth year, continued to be very dry in October, November, resulting in, um, power sales revenue that was under budget by close to two million dollars. On the plus side, prices were higher than expected during last year's time, and, and our power team, marketing team captured the extra revenue to make some of that up, so that's good news. A little bit about the, the budget, the adjusted budget was forty-seven million, and then the actual audit ended up being forty-five and a half million dollars. And I'll talk about, um, there was obviously no net income to that, um, kind of the summary of that. They were favorable considering the drought conditions. Um, the MFP gross revenue was lower than forecast by about four percent, but the expenditures were lower by twenty-three percent. We were able to find quite a few cost savings. We did not get the license, therefore, we did not have to spend a lot of that money and with some other cost savings. And we were able to pro, provide about thirteen million dollars towards the reserve funding. A little bit about those accounts, uh, the three accounts, the operating reserve, we partially funded that, another thirteen million, it now totals twenty million. We, 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 by board, by, by that board's policy, it needs to be twenty-five million. The emergency reserve, we can't fund that until we fund the operating reserve, that's right now, the target is two million by board policy. The capital reserve, we were able to meet all of our two thousand fourteen capital budget requests, but the reserve did not get any funding, and that's about twenty-seven and a half million. And that, again, that reserve is getting ready for all the relicensing activities that must take place for federal and state law and that license. A little bit of observations about that, again, by MFP FA board policy, which Supervisor Wigan and Supervisor Holmes sit on, um, before we can, uh, well, those must be fully funded before we can have any net revenues to be distributed. Um, the, the reserve contributions were higher last year, given a drought, again, doing the operating expenses were, were brought under slightly, and the power market prices were up there. Um, and then the capital expenditure plan, as I said, was met by the direct appropriations. Same will happen this year, and I'll talk about what's, what the reductions are in general that are planned. Um, there was an authorization of one point two million from the operating reserves for the emergency funding of the debris management from the King Fire. Um, and, and again, that was, just in summary, we had to put in place, in case we got large rains and snows, a protection system that the end of the, of, of the river, Rubicon River is our dam that regulates everything, and we could not allow anything to go in there and hit that. So we didn't spend one point two million dollars, we spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that money had needed to be appropriated. It was a cash flow issue, by the way, is why we took it from the operating reserves. It, it, it now would be, um, brought back to there, so we, we'll be in a whole position. However, the cost over the next three to five years could be as high as ten million estimate, again, to take that debris out. And as I've said in the past, we are advocating our federal partners with our, our, our federal legislators to try to get NEPA changed to allow the federal government to take responsibility for something that happens on their land to be a good neighbor, but we aren't, we haven't gotten anywhere with that just yet. Little bit about two thousand fifteen, and entitled volatility in action. You know, this year looks to be a critically dry year. Uh, it's even lower than last year, as you saw from this morning, um, no snowpack, uh, it's the lowest snowpack on record, and it's in the driest ten percent ever in our watershed. Uh, prudent management by, water management by PCWA, PG&E, and NID, as you heard, and the operators, the federal operators at Folsom Reservoir, plus the customer conservation efforts have allowed enough water to be available in this year to meet all of the needs, including agricultural needs for two thousand fifteen. So that's, that's at least good news, we, we did our part and we, we've got enough for this year. Sort of the bad news of this side is that the energy market continues to be dominated by low natural gas prices, historically low, although in the last month, we've seen then climb a little bit, which is encouraging. Uh, we still think they're going to be twenty-five to thirty percent lower than our conservative budget projected, so we're looking at essentially a shortfall, um, there. Impact of that, of course, is that reserve funding will be slowed, if any. Not sure, we won't know until July whether that will have, uh, a possibility of funding some, and of course, the revenue distributions would be delayed yet another year, again, until those reserves are filled. Um, you know, the forecasts are the revenues are substantially less than our budget. However, we expect to meet the capital plan, but probably not funding the reserves. Cost-saving measures are being implemented as we speak. We met, uh, this past week with our senior staff from PCWA, we've al, they've already identified about a million dollars in cost savings on the operating side. There are several million dollars in, um, savings on the capital budget side they are working on now. At the July MFP FA meeting, it'll include the mid-year review and budget modification recommendations for that board to, um, hopefully approve, and that would bring us back into alignment so that we would meet all of our operational costs for the year, um, that project. A little bit about the project itself, the relicensing, uh, another drought, which means the state, people who would normally work on the relicensing are overworking on the drought and the water bond and the twin tunnels and the, whatever else is going on at the state. That means ours is on the shelf. Uh, again, like last year, it could be a year, it could be three years from now before we get that. Good news is, we, we operate under the old licensing conditions, which are actually favorable to us economically, more so than the new, um, and we are allowed to do all the things we need to do, so we're not in trouble in any of those issues. We continue, though, to work with the agencies to get ready for that license because it takes quite a lot, planning with federal and state agencies, to be able to move a project forward, as you all know, given all of the responsibilities you have. On the energy side, um, there was a, uh, an MFP Energy Marketing Oversight Policy, which is that, again, this, your staff and PCWA staff that monitor and look at overall policy of how the revenue power side works, and we've implemented a policy now after researching the market, and it's, we believe we're in a good place to provide overall direction to the PCWA staff that actually implements that. On their side, the PCWA Board approved an energy risk management policy, adopted it last fall along with that, which means that their employees have certain guidelines that meet CISO rules, federal, state, and, uh, and go with the overall policy of the project. So those, all of the policies, we believe, are now in place. That particular policy will grow over time as we change. Um, we, we remove ourselves from the first five-year contract, which ends, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen. We may have new things, um, that we might need to look at, and we would play, of course, place in the policy first, and we're about to launch on those discussions about where we go in the future. We have started to build an energy control center. Um, that's going to increase the value, it also reduces the risk and provides much more stabili, uh, stability in all of the federal and state requirements that are associated with running a water operation and more particularly a power operation, uh, with cybersecurity and a lot of other factors that are now buried in this work we, uh, that, that needs to go on. Um, and all that will be online well before the new contract starts. Um, we are in the development of a five-year strategic plan that looks at all of those items that may affect the change. There's a changing market, uh, the power market is quite different than when we started. Um, we've seen that, uh, the drought has affected the ability to do stuff, so we're looking at all sorts of opportunities to bring more dollars into the program, um, and, and look for that future plan so that we have direction, particularly for PCWA staff, since they run most of the operations, that they will now be guided by. We hope to have, uh, probably a draft of that by the end of this year. I don't think we're going to make it fully on, on the end of this year, but it should be early next year when that happens. Um, a little bit on the risk reduction, um, they have done a great job, they being PCWA, in updating, uh, taking over from PG&E and really getting in line with the North American Reliability Corporation, uh, which is effectively the organization that looks at the operations, and then the Western Electric Coordinating Council is the west-side implementation of that. They have gone, they have developed their procedures, it's been approved, they are now in joint operations with PCWA. In a couple of years, PCWA would go off and PCW, or, yeah, PG&E would go off, and PCWA would have the full authority, so we're looking good on that side. Currently, there's an insurance and a risk review proj, uh, project going on at PCWA to ensure the lowest risk and cost solutions for that. Um, we are going to get briefed here shortly on their, their status of that, that hopes, we hope that is done by the end of the year and presented back to the Middle Fork Finance Authority Board with the solution, and that ties back into our, our reserve policies as well. We now can understand how much we are, um, insured for and how much we have to be ready for on, on the risk side, uh, of, of the insurance. And our, Marianne Peters has been a part of that process, so that we've given, helped give that guidance to PCWA as well. Infrastructure side, um, they're prepar, as I said, preparing to build quite a lot of new infrastructure once the license hits, but there have been some things happen in the last couple of years on the critical infrastructure at the powerhouses and spillway controls that, um, PCWA has been able to manage under budget and get replaced before we had more serious issues like a shutdown of one of those items. They, they, when they found small problems, they opened it up, they went in, looked in, and they found potential larger problems, so they solved both at the same time, and I think that's, that's been very helpful. There's also been an upgrade of the software, as you imagine, PG&E left us with, uh, kind of nineteen eighties or nineties technology, we have upgraded that, and now, this year is the year that communications will go in, so we'll actually be able to operate these things remotely. So when it does snow again, um, we don't have to send snowplows out, uh, and snow, uh, to, to get to these places, we can do it all by the control centers. And, and I always like to hit this because it, it is what I live with and PCWA lives with, which is, which is revenue volatility, the hydrology impact, you know what's happened the last several years in drought. Uh, ju, just as a reminder, you know, historic range of production, a low of two hundred and nine mega, megawatt hours to a high of one point eight, and the average is about a million. You know, last year, we did about half a million, this year, we're going to do less than that, we're going to do about three hundred ninety million megawatt hours. So that's a, that's a sign, you know, we, we all saw the projections for this project, we're going to be healthy, but we knew they were going to be bumpy years, we didn't expect the first three year to be the bumpiest. Um, so hopefully that will turn around, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Story? Nope. Members of the public? Don't see any.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Brett. And at this point, County Council will, uh, take us into closed session.
Uh, the board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items set out on page four of the agenda and on, uh, a supplemental agenda posted on Friday. Uh, the board will have a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of existing litigation and two items of anticipated litigation. In addition to workers' compensation claims, the board will also, uh, discuss certain public employee performance evaluations.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
We don't have any of our AV up here, does that matter? We still good and live and it's being recorded and everything's good? Okay. Board has concluded closed session. County Council will report out the findings of the board in closed session.
Yeah, in closed session, the board had a conference with legal counsel to discuss two items of litigation in which they heard a report from counsel and gave direction, authorizing the defense of the Navo pipelines versus MCM construction, gave direction on City of Auburn versus County of Placer. Under anticipated litigation, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. And the board heard a report on two workers' compensation claims and gave direction to counsel. And finally, the board had a discussion on public employee performance evaluations and no action was taken.
Thank you. That concludes the items before the board here on May 19th, and so we're adjourned until June 2nd.